Welcome. My name is Anita Seitz. I'm the mayor pro tem, and I would like to welcome everyone to the August 17th special session, or special city council meeting. I would ask that everyone please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk Parker, can you please lead us in a roll call?
Certainly. Mayor Atchison. Councillor Demont.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Seitz.
Here.
Councillor Seymour.
Here.
Councillor Scully. Councillor Smith.
Here.
And Councillor Vols.
Thank you, everyone. I would now like to take a motion to excuse Mayor Atchison and Councillor Scully from tonight's special council meeting. Do I have anyone who's willing to make that motion?
Thank you. I would like to move to excuse Mr. Atchison and Mrs. Scully from tonight's special meeting.
Councillor Smith?
Second.
Thank you. We've had a motion and we've had a second. This is a voice vote. Can everyone in favor please vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Okay. Now I'd like to move us on to the purpose of our special meeting. Item 3A. You will see before you there's three options city council can take. Can I get a motion from a member of council? And for the record, I should read, this is in regards to an emergency ordinance for the adoption of the 2021 budget no later than November 30th of 2020. Does anyone want to make one of the motions? Okay, Councillor Seymour, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Seitz. I move to continue the councillor's bill number 27, providing for the adoption of the 2021 budget no later than November 30th, 2020, to the regular meeting of city council on August 24th.
Councillor Smith?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I believe that this is a roll call vote. I apologize. Are there any questions? And it appears that there is one from Councillor Demont.
Thank you. I just was curious to hear from staff when we first heard about potentially moving the budget process out so that we had more time to evaluate our options. I had asked, actually, I had requested that, you know, if we're going to do that, that I'd like to make sure that we have some opportunity for more citizen input and to get us back into city halls so that that can happen and they can have the proper input into the budget process, especially considering we're likely having to make some hard choices this year under the constraints of COVID. So I'm just curious if there's been any movement on that since that was one of my asks when we first talked about this.
Thank you, Councillor Demont. This is Barbara Opie, Acting City Manager. I'm going to ask Larry Dorr to please provide some additional information as to our efforts moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Opie. Larry Dorr speaking, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy City Manager. Yes, Councillor Demont, I want to acknowledge your request related to the next steps that would occur in our budget process. We would anticipate at least one additional council study session to occur in the first week of October, and that would potentially coincide with in-person meetings. But we have many considerations before having either full in-person or hybrid meetings at City Hall, and that can't be understood here on August 17th. But given that that could be as much as 45 days out, it certainly is conceivable that those things could occur. We do have some opportunities for the public to share their thoughts. Of course, those are in electronic format on our website and so forth. So I realize that that's not the same as the opportunity for folks to testify in public during in-person public hearings, and we would hope to be able to do that. But that's on a schedule that I don't quite have right on hand. It's not fully developed in terms of if we would be in city council chambers. But in addition to that October date, and I think it would be, it's likely that we would anticipate an October 5th study session to follow up on any questions, comments, or concerns from council's Saturday budget retreat of September 19th. We would have additional, both regular public meetings and I would anticipate follow-on study sessions to occur later in October and potentially into November. So I would suggest that, given that that's as much as two months or more away, that there's an increasing probability of in-person meetings. But at this point, sir, I can't, I couldn't say for sure whether or not we would have in-person or hybrid meetings for the public to testify. So it's just unknown at this point, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. I guess I would just voice, I will support this tonight, but I am extremely and increasingly concerned at the lack of details that we've got to this point about where we're at with the budget and, you know, and hiring freezes and stuff and just some actions we've taken. So I hope that we start having a more in-depth conversation about this. As I think back even to our budget retreat, we talked a lot about potential options and, you know, really the gap that, you know, earlier in this year we were told was $30 million. Now we're told that somewhere between 18 and $32 million. You know, time is slipping away from us, and I don't feel that we've had a good discussion yet, so I hope that's to come. I do think that we need the additional time to, you know, be thoughtful with the budget. But I am growing concerned, and I think it's worth sharing that with staff. So, thank you.
All right. It looks like we also have a question from Councillor Smith.
Thank you. So I, well, this came before us in a study session on August 3rd. I cautiously approve this because I was very, much like to Councillor Demont's point, very concerned about the budget and where we were going with it. I didn't feel after our strategic planning that we'd have, we had enough details as far as where we were. We know that we're in 18 to 32, or $30 million shortfall, and I just don't feel like pushing it even further will allow us to then get into those details. So I again will cautiously approve this today. But one of my questions is, and that I wrote down, is that it had to be adopted by December 15th, is that correct? And why did we choose November 30th as our date?
Thank you, Councillor Smith. Larry Dorr, once again. Let's see, the Colorado statute calls for December 15th, and so November 30th will allow for a little additional time in there and not bump up right against that latest deadline. And of course, that is a fifth Monday, the 30th following the holiday week and so forth. So, you know, the idea is that it allows for an additional calendar month and additional time for public input, potentially in-person testimony during public hearings and so forth. Also allows for another full calendar month of revenue collections and understanding those trends and what those impacts might be allows for an additional month of potential state or local orders restricting or unrestricting business economic activities. So the idea is to take in that full range of information, then also for council to consider, you know, the various choices that are involved and could include voter-approved revenue changes depending on the choice of council and the voters of Westminster. So all of those things coming together, it appears though best to have that adoption in November. Of course, the week prior is holiday week, and so never a perfect time, but it appeared as though the end of the month, November 30th, is what I put on the table for your consideration. Of course, it council's pleasure. It could be a week later, a week earlier, that, those kinds of things. But I think November 30th fits just the right balance of all of the different considerations that you have on hand. So that's the deadline for December 15th, well within that, and the idea behind November 30th. Thank you.
Okay. And if we aren't able to get to solidify a budget by, or excuse me, November 30th, we have the opportunity then to go into another week as part of the leeway, is that what I understand?
Yes. Well, council would have to reapprove an additional emergency ordinance, of course, and all that comes with that. But I think that the city council would have a pretty good feel for that within a couple of weeks of November 30th, certainly if that was how things were shaping up for mayor and council, then certainly you could adopt an additional ordinance in October or in early November that extended that deadline yet even further, but more cautious and diligent and want to allow for a little contingency time in there. So hence the difference between November 30th and December 15th. But yeah, whatever would be the choice of the city council, of course.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Councillor Smith, do you feel all your questions were answered?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'd like to move on to Councillor Vols.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So one of the biggest roles we have as city councillors is approving the budget each year or every other year, and it happens to be a one-year budget this time. I guess my question would be, can we wait a week to vote on this? This is, meaning that we have five out of seven here tonight, and maybe it would be changing the how we do our budget, maybe we should have all seven or at least more than five. Does anyone else, I guess, I have a little bit of concern that we are approving this. We have two members not with us tonight, the mayor and Councillor Scully. I wonder if we would want to delay this until a week until everyone's here to vote on it, possibly. Thank you.
Perhaps I misheard, Councillor Vols, but I believe the motion that Councillor Seymour made was to continue it until next week. Is that correct, Councillor Seymour? Or did I miss, I might have misheard. Unfortunately, Councillor Seymour, you are unmute. I apologize.
Thank you. No, you are correct, Mayor Pro Tem Seitz. I did move on the middle of the three on there to move the councillor's bill to next Monday, the 24th.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Thank you, Councillor Seymour, for saying that. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I totally thought we were moving on this and doing something tonight, and especially, thank you. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other further questions, Councillor Vols?
I do not. Thank you.
Wonderful. That's my two cents. I do think that a continuation till next week is appropriate for the reasons Councillor Vols just stated, but also we should be getting our next financial report that will give us as a council a better idea of where we were at with our city's revenues to help us make this decision. So with that, I would ask our city clerk, Ms. Michelle Parker, to lead us in a roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem, I believe that Councillor Seymour might have one more comment, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not sure if that happened before your comments or after.
No, that was just clarification. It was clarification on my motion, so we covered that. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Seymour. Okay. Well, I'll move on to the roll call vote. We'll begin with Councillor Demont.
Yes.
Demont votes yes. Mayor Pro Tem Seitz?
Yes.
Seitz votes yes. Councillor Seymour?
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Councillor Smith?
Yes.
Smith votes yes. And Councillor Vols?
Yes.
And Vols votes yes. And that motion passes on a 5-0 vote.
Thank you, Clerk Parker. And that concludes our business, the special meeting for August 17th. We will now continue to our regularly scheduled study session. The roll call from the previous special meeting does still stand. First item of business is reports from the mayor, and as the mayor is unable to attend tonight, I am filling in for him, and so I'll give my reports. It's with great sadness that we learned today of the passing of a real legend of a leader in Westminster history. Vi June was the first woman mayor of the city of Westminster, and she was also just a remarkable human being. We have been informed that she passed away peacefully on Saturday, August 15th, at home, surrounded by her family, and we know she loved and was dedicated to. She served on the Westminster City Council from 1965 to 1981, and she served as Westminster mayor from 1975 to 1981. She often referred to those years as Camelot in Westminster's history. We have a lot to be thankful for. In addition to serving directly as a local leader for Westminster on our city council, she also served as House District 35 representative at the Colorado Legislature from 1991 to 1998. And most recently, she was recognized by the Westminster Legacy Foundation with the Nancy Hile Lifetime Achievement Award in 2018. I feel very fortunate that I was able to get to know Vi June. I found her to be a remarkable character. I enjoy being lobbied hard by her on her back patio sipping sweet tea. She was not afraid to ask for what she thought was best for the community, and she advocated for the community throughout her life. So she is going to be sorely missed. I will, myself, try to remain committed to that same level of lifelong dedication to this community and just thank her for all of her service. In addition to having served in that capacity, I do know that she also wrote op-eds for the Westminster window. So really, service and working with the community was so important to her. With that said, I have nothing else to report. I will turn it over to reports from city councillors. Councillor Demont?
Thank you. I had a couple of things that I wouldn't like to cover tonight. First, I joined the inclusivity board this last week for their monthly meeting, and they talked a lot about their strategic retreat and how they could do that. It does seem like there was desire potentially to try to do that in person. I know they're working with Jason Gank from the Parks and Recs Department, who is one of the liaisons to the board, to work on that endeavor, to figure out how they could do a strategic plan and what that's going to look like. I think much like ourselves, when we did ours, I think there's a feeling that it would be more productive in person, but obviously with COVID, that isn't always possible. I know, though, that the staff was looking at options for them and what that might look like with the current requirements as far as COVID to potentially host that in person. The other thing they talked a lot about was just their, in the different meetings that they've had with the police department and the chief, and then talking about some of those listening tours that the department has went on. And there was an idea talked about, about potentially doing, and I really, I had recommended, as always, I'm a big advocate of the Citizen Police Academy. And I think that one of the things I shared with that group that I think is important, if they're going to give good feedback, I think it's important for them to see how our department works today, you know, so that they understand the job. And it sounds like quite a few members, that we do have one member who took the Police Citizen Academy, and it sounded like quite a bit of members were interested in it, but with the time commitment that they already have between, you know, their normal lives as well as their inclusivity tasks, you know, that that might be hard. So there was the idea, potentially Jason was going to talk to the chief about maybe them doing a condensed academy and bringing it to that board, and I think that would serve a lot of value. So that was something they were interested in, and I think that Jason was going to evaluate that with the chief. The, so that's with inclusivity board, I had sent an email in regards to some concerns that I had been getting from citizens about the water, and I know that some of us were reached out to by local media as well as, I've had quite a few residents reaching out to me, and we got some FAQ back from the staff today. And I think it kind of misses the mark, honestly, when we're looking at some of this stuff, and we talked about this maybe a month, two months ago, when I had asked about the spikes in bills. And really, you know, we keep hearing that the new meters, and this makes sense, that if a new meter is put into place, that it's potential that it is more accurate, so you could see a bigger amount than before because it's accurately measuring water. What I'm really concerned with is spikes, though, that seem like I'm hearing more and more across the city about people who will get a spike, and then the next month it's less, and they are not changing, you know, their watering habits. So I really do think that we need to dig a little deeper into that. And one of the other things that you had answered about was the fact that our code allows for a 27 to 33-day billing cycle. I haven't seen the answer to this question yet, but I would like to see what, if we have like a calendar on our billing cycles, how we decide and what that's looked like for the last, say, two to five years of what our actual billing cycles have been. I would like to be able to see that so I can understand how this is done and answer some questions that I've had from residents as far as the water rates. And that is everything I've got. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councillor Demont. I just want to say, I love that idea of kind of a condensed Citizen Academy. I believe that Broomfield's city council partook in something that was similar to that, and I would not be surprised if there was a lot of interest from this council in participating in something like that as well. So thank you for bringing forward.
Yep. I agree. I think that that would be a good, good way for them to see the law enforcement side of things from today and be able to give even more valuable feedback once they see how things are done. So I agree, it would be really good if they're able to pull that off for them.
Okay. And I would selfishly like to have that extended for city council as well. Councillor Smith, it looks like you have comments or reports.
Yes, thank you. So this past week, I attended, I also jumped in on the inclusivity board to see what they were up to and to gather just more information about the activities they have going on. Great group that we got. I'm so glad that we have them. I also participated in the CC4CA, and they, let's see, they voted in a new chair and new vice chair. It is Carl Castillo from Boulder, and the first chair is Jenny Wilford from Northland, and then the second chair is Jessie Burley from Breckenridge. And then, much to Councillor Demont's points on water, we have been receiving a lot of concerns from our residents, and I want to just put out a thought to council, I did it in an email, but just a thought to council to make sure that this is a priority for us as we go forward in the budget. I'm happy to report that we were able to not increase water rates for 2021, but we need to continue to look at that as a group because the spikes in water rates that we're receiving as a council from comments is just appalling and something that I know I wouldn't be able to pay for. We're all on fixed incomes in one way or another, and it's disheartening to see so many residents that are concerned and reaching out to us for help. I also sent in an email regarding Westy Connect, and I want to work with staff on figuring out those reports for council, because on the website, it does say that if you have an idea for council, connect through us, through ST Connect. So I've asked staff to provide the comments that we are receiving through those portals. I think it's important for us as a council to know and have that connection available even as a resource on our website. So those are the couple of things that are on my hot topic list for this week. Thank you for the opportunity to report.
Thank you, Councillor Smith, for that report and for those comments and sharing your concerns with the rest of council. Next, we'll move into the city manager's report. Acting City Manager Barbara Opie, do you have anything to report for us?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Seitz. The only item that I have is just to note that, obviously with Dawn Trip unavailable this evening, that the item listed under the, under presentation of the city manager's annual report, the fifth item under presentations tonight, will be delayed. We are planning for it for next week, so apologies there, but he sends his regards. Thank you. Nothing else.
Thank you. Thank you. So the first item before us tonight is going to be a presentation on a proposal for city council workshops on water and wastewater infrastructure costs and rates. So let's go ahead and turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This is Barbara Opie again. I would like to first start with just a brief little introduction, and then we have with us tonight is Heather Bergman, the facilitator who is identified in the staff report as the proposed facilitator for this process. Heather has got extensive background in designing and managing retreats, workshops, and public outreach meetings for teams and organizations in need of a targeted process for achieving their goal. She has substantial experience working with diverse stakeholders, coming together to find solutions for challenging public policy issues, and she's worked with municipal and regional teams, city councils, boards of directors, to outline their shared goals, improve working relationships, and craft more collaborative approach in future meetings and work efforts. In her work, she helps participants to move from holding isolated positions to meeting public, multiple interests and seeking to meet personal needs to working to find shared solutions. So we feel that she has, she brings great experience and knowledge to this effort. We had reached out to her, and I believe Ms. Bergman is on the meeting tonight, if she'd like to join us. The proposal is just to come back to city council based on her conversations with you about water and wastewater, and as we get ready to look into, obviously not 21, but as we get preparing for the 22 rate discussion with city council. And so, Ms. Bergman, if you could come talk to council a little bit about your proposal that's attached to tonight's agenda.
I would be delighted. Thank you very much.
And you can turn your camera on, too, if you'd like.
I was going to ask. I did my hair for you and everything, everybody. I mean, really. Council, good evening. I am excited to hopefully work with you on this project. I did have the opportunity to chat with all of you by phone, and sort of, if you recall, we entered this conversation where I said, I kind of have some general questions, but I need for you to tell me where you think you all are as a council and as a city related to water and wastewater rates, where you think the conversation is currently, where you think it needs to go. And y'all had all kinds of smart thoughts, and they were fantastic, and I took lots and lots and lots of notes. And then based on what you said, I did put together this sort of overall process summary that I believe is in your packet. I'll summarize the key themes in case you haven't had a chance to review all the juicy details in the packet, and then if you have questions for me, I'm very happy to answer them. So the general idea here, and the thing that I want to stress the most, is that the goal of the conversation that we're proposing with council is sort of twofold. The thing one is just to make sure that you all have the same set of information, and that it's complete information to help you to determine your individual perspectives, views on water and wastewater rates for the future. Secondly, is once we all have the same information, it might create some opportunity for you all to think differently with each other and with staff, perhaps with the community about sort of new ideas, new ways to think about how the pieces might fit. The purpose is not two things, and I cannot stress this enough. My purpose is never ever to try to convince you as council members individually or as a group to achieve or to vote a certain way, to have a certain view. Not my job, I'm not in PR. And it's also not to create an opportunity or to facilitate any kind of judgment of one another, of your motives or of staff about why people think what they think. of your motives or of staff about why people think what they think. I just want to make sure you all know what each other think, you know what you think, and you have whatever those views are based on the same, and as I said, complete set of information and data. So that's the overall goal of what we're talking about here. And I take, I would welcome your suggestions, but based on our conversations, it sounds like most of you thought that we could do this with some meetings. Several of you preferred in person. But again, as you've been discussing, the COVID challenges might make that tricky. So we're thinking maybe sort of five, two-ish hour virtual meetings like this. You've already seen that my bias here is toward cameras on. I feel like when we're talking about difficult issues, I would love for y'all to be able to see each other. And so I can see your faces and it helps us sort of to bring some more meaning to the conversation that we're having. There's a lot of questions that you have. I've sort of listed the key ones that I heard. I envision these conversations starting generally with a staff presentation followed by your discussion. And so to make that work, we have to make sure that we have all of your questions on the given topic for the night. We'll have to sort of bite it or take it off into little bites and do one bite per meeting. And I, again, I tried to capture the questions that I heard from you. I hope that if you like this idea going forward, you'll send me any more questions that I might have missed in this summary document in your packet. I was typing fast when y'all were talking, but I might have missed a couple. And so we do the presentation, then we have a discussion. And we're not going to look at the end of each one of these two hour meetings to come to any kind of decision. The goal of the first bunch is just to make sure, again, we have the same information. And then toward the end, as I'll talk here in a minute, we'll sort of think about some creative ideas and see if there's new ways to to bite this apple in ways that make sense for you all, makes sense for staff, and of course, for the residents that you're thinking about when you have these conversations. So those are the highlights and the juicy bits. One thing here at the bottom of the first page of my proposal that I wanted to stress and make sure that you're that you're aware of is I find that when we have these kinds of complicated conversations, the documentation of the discussion ends up being very important. And people who know the content often write the summary in a different way than people who whose only job is to be a neutral recorder of the conversation. So I did include in my vision for these for these meetings that someone from my staff would come and their only function will be to sit there and type up all the things that y'all say and write a very neutral meeting summary that doesn't assume rightness or wrongness or accuracy or anything in what people says. It just sort of captures, here are the things. So that's sort of the overarching thought that that we have here. And then I'll just briefly walk you through the vision for these five sessions. And spoiler alert, I'm going to come back later and ask you, do you think this is a cool idea and are you on board? And if so, what is the cadence or the schedule of these meetings that makes sense to you? Want to make sure that you have time to think about things, want to make sure that staff has time to prepare. So somewhere there's a right schedule and I'd love to hear your thoughts on that. So the first idea, the first meeting would be sort of some setting of the stage. As a nerdy facilitator, I do have a couple of thoughts I'd like to share with you before we get started related to interests and positions and how we can all think kind of as broadly as possible going into the conversation. And so we'll chat about that a little bit. And then the rest of that first meeting is just diving right into the water infrastructure and the system conversation. Again, bunch of questions here, but that first meeting really does focus on the water infrastructure. Because then the next one, the second one, is a similar kind of conversation with similar kinds of questions, but it's focused more on the wastewater infrastructure, excuse me. And then after we do sort of the infrastructure and the system understanding discussion, then we move on to rates and costs. Those things are related. Y'all have a lot of questions about rates and costs. That third meeting is focused again on costs and rates related to the water system. How is it calculated, et cetera, et cetera? And then the fourth meeting is on wastewater. There's a lot of overlap in those two lists of questions, but there are some things that were different that I did hear. So if you have a minute, you might want to take a gander at those. So that's the first four meetings. And then the last one is really geared toward, okay, so now that we know all of that, what are the options for rates going forward? Do we want to think about, you know, different kinds of sequencing, different kinds of packages? I have no idea what your ideas will be, but I'm eager to hear them. But this would be one whole meeting just really focused on thinking about those new ideas and getting a sense of which of the ideas that we have meet the meet the most of the interests that we identify at the first meeting and meet them the best. So that preliminary list of interests that we'll talk about at the first meeting becomes something of a sort of a list of criteria or that you can use to evaluate your ideas going forward. Maybe there's just one answer. I really don't know, but maybe there's a bunch. And so for a bunch, we could say, okay, for idea A or set of ideas A, how does it run up against these these interests? Does it meet them? Does it not? Where does it come up short? Could we revise it to make it, help it meet the interests better? And then we would have a conversation, then we would do the next one. I do this kind of discussion a lot with stakeholders, both professional stakeholders and regular residents of communities. And it tends to go really well as a way to focus and anchor the conversation. So with that in mind, that I that I designed this overall approach. So that is the quick and dirty of the idea. Again, you have more information in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. But our questions for you, question one is, what do you think? Are you down with this? You want to do this idea? Second one is, if you are down with it and do want to do it, how often do you want to meet? You want to bang it out in a couple of weeks? Do you want to do one meeting a week? Do you want to do one meeting a month? There's some urgency, but at present, there's not a huge big hot fire under this one. And I do know that y'all got a lot of other stuff on your plate. So we might need to think strategically about to how to fit it in. There's my presentation, Barbara. We got, you want to take questions? How do you want to proceed?
Thank you, Heather. I'll just turn it over to Mayor Protem Sights. If there's questions from council for Heather on the two questions that she's posed, that would be greatly appreciated, some feedback.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. We already do have a question from Counselor Demont.
Fantastic.
Well, thanks for joining us tonight. First off, I appreciate the conversations that we've had with you so far and you coming back to share kind of what you think that would look like for us. I have some questions both for you and for staff. It's unfortunate that, you know, Don isn't isn't able to join us tonight. So I'm not sure that, you know, we might not have to go back to him to answer my questions. But first, I'm curious about costs, which is one thing that you and I I shared with you that that was really dependent for me whether or not I thought this was a good idea. And for staff, I'm just kind of curious why we felt we needed to go outside. So this was something that was brought to us, and I think I shared this with you when we spoke, that, you know, when it came forward, I honestly didn't know what it was about. So I'm curious why we think that we need an outside group to, you know, talk through this specifically around some of the like education pieces. I know we do have some members of council who are a little newer than others. But, you know, we've went through some of those presentations before. And I feel like, you know, we sometimes get lost in that that council may or may not understand how our infrastructure works when we get into the the cost discussion. So I'm just trying to understand, A, what is this actually going to cost us? And B, why we think from a staff perspective, why this is the right move? And I don't know if Barbara, if you're able to answer for what Don's thoughts were on this or not.
Okay, so first off, the question about cost, the proposal is proposed at $10,000 for the five meetings with the facilitative process and with the reporting back. And then as to staff's perspective on the rationale for the recommendation to doing this is our efforts, previously we've worked with Heather on a few other areas and found that she is very good at helping us identify areas that we may be missing and drilling down into. And the thought of using an outside facilitator to help us through this process is to ensure that we are being accountable to all the questions that council is raising and making sure that we are helping address those in a timely fashion. We've been been working diligently to address the questions as they've come up. But our hope is that by doing this through a facilitative process, Heather can hold us to, hey, you missed this point, you forgot to answer that question, which sometimes may happen. Or to more specifically go, hey, I understand council, counselor had mentioned these concerns or questions and I want to make sure while they aren't formally part of the questions that have been submitted, I want to make sure we address them. So what they, what she may be hearing may be different than what we may be getting as well. So our hope is that this allows for a greater dialogue and allows staff to focus on trying to provide the information, allows for a better conversation flow between city council among yourselves as well as with staff. And so that is why we're recommending bringing in Heather. She's she holds holds folks accountable to their different components.
I appreciate your answer. I guess to share my feedback with with council about where I'm at. You know, it's in the the overall budget of our budget, that's not a ton of money. But it is a ton of money, especially right now. So I mean, it's kind of both. And now we're in a really hard time where we're going to have to make some hard choices. I am a little frustrated that it's, I'll be frank, that it's come to the point that we need an outside group to answer our questions. I know I specifically have had multiple occasions where I've had to ask over and over. So I'm not sure how the questions get lost. I feel like sometimes the questions don't want to be answered. So that's just to share my my feedback with my colleagues as we discuss. I'd be happy to get feedback from the rest of you. I'm not really a yes or a no at this point, but I am a little frustrated. I think that we've got to the point that we need to bring in outside person and to have this sort of conversation.
Counselor Demont, if I could also ask Max Kershbaum to add on a couple of his perspective as well.
Thank you. Heather and Barbara both said it well, that the idea of an outside facilitator is just to be able to get all of council to a similar and common level of understanding of the information and the data that you think you need for a good decision. And that at the end, perhaps at that fifth session that Heather described, that there would be also accountability on behalf of all of us for the outcome of where this would lead for rate recommendation for 2022.
I, again, I appreciate the answer. I guess I just have some reservation with it. You know, I've been through a couple of these or at least one of the, well, two now because we did this 0% rate increase because of COVID, which I'm grateful that that was a decision we made for this year or for next year, understanding that our residents are definitely hurting with COVID. However, when we went through this in 18, the majority of council seemed to agree with staff and it wasn't necessary. So I just don't understand at this point in time why it's necessary. But, you know, that's just my opinion of it and my concern about it, and I think it's fair for me to share it.
Thank you, Counselor Demont. Are your questions fully answered at this point?
Yeah, I'm good for right now. Thank you.
Okay. The next counselor in queue is Counselor Smith.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Bergman, for talking with all of us and trying to figure out all the questions. And I appreciate the due diligence. And I think I was the first that you interviewed in that. And I as well was taken back with, wait a minute, what is, what is the purpose of this? And so it's very, very confusing to me that one, that staff didn't bring it forward. It just kind of came about, it felt like. And it may have come up in a study session, but it felt that it was very rushed and pushed forward. And so with that, I think it's a, this is an incredibly top, important topic to have. It's relevant and it will continue to be relevant as we go through these next months and years on how we keep Westminster sustainable and financially stable. So while I appreciate the discussion and while the $10,000 is minimal, I I would like to also hear from my colleagues as far as what their thoughts are. I'm more of a, more of a no on this and I come from a staff perspective, okay? And so when your staff and you have a facilitator talking about things that you should know about and things that you are a subject matter expert in, it seems counterproductive to me to put more money towards this facilitator on having those discussions that you should already be having. And so as council, we are the accountability. We are the accountability for staff, for the residents. And so when when we have staff saying or a facilitator needing to say, oh, you forgot XYZ on a question or an answer, it's concerning to me as a council member to hear that we need a facilitator then to answer all of our questions. It should be on staff to be having, to be answering those questions. And maybe this is, you know, it's like I said, it's a hot topic for, right now, it's relevant and for all of us to be talking about. So I would like to to hear from my my colleagues. But right now, I'm really hesitant to move forward with this, just from from a staff and counselor perspective.
Does staff or would would you, Heather, like to, Ms. Bergman, would you like to respond to Counselor Smith's concerns? Or should I move on to the next question?
I'm happy to respond if you want me to do it now, or we could hear from more council members and then I could respond at the end, whatever your preferences.
I think we typically answer the questions as they come.
Perfecto. So I think the the primary clarification that I would have is, oh, there are a couple. Thing one, I will not be answering your technical questions because that would be foolish. 100%, you do not want me doing that. I do fair amount of water work, but I wouldn't answer your questions. But part of my job is to help be a different set of ears. There's an interesting dynamic that can develop with a council that knows it's, that knows each other and a council that knows staff and vice versa, where you start to do this thing where you talk past each other or listen past each other sometimes. And the thing, among the things that I would bring into this conversation is the ability to say, hey, you know what, I know you think I answered that question and she's nodding, but that was not actually a satisfactory answer. Or I can watch your dynamic again with the cameras on to see when your brows get furrowed, but you're kind of tired of asking the same question, I can help with that. The other thing that I can do is help staff look through their standard slide deck just to the other council members' point that you've heard a lot of this and say, yeah, you know what, though, that that kind of information makes sense to this kind of a brain. Analytical brains, they love your little data charts. Ideas brains, people brains, we don't understand all that. That's not how you communicate with us. So you need to think about different ways to convey the information. So all the kinds of brains can understand. So that's thing one, just on the question answer. The other thing that that I feel like I will bring into this discussion is not just to walk you through or walk through the presentations with you, but that fifth meeting that's really about, now that we know all that stuff, what are the ways that we can crack this nut? Because it would be to me a failure if we got to the end of that and the only thing that you ended up with is you had two ideas from staff that you had at the beginning and now we're just going to go into a business meeting and you're going to vote on those. I think that there's probably some additional ways to think about the problems and the challenges that you face as a city that staff hasn't thought of yet and that maybe you as council members haven't thought of yet. But if we get you together and some bossy girl bosses you just a little bit to think differently about those, you might come up with some really cool ideas that no one's thought of yet.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Counselor Smith, does that fully address your questions at this point?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to move on now to Counselor Seymour. Counselor Seymour, feel free to address with any questions you have, Ms. Bergman and staff.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. I always have it backwards on the muting. Ms. Bergman, good to see you and hear from you again. I feel that you and I had a very frank conversation and hopefully everyone else did with you also. But I too, I always have concerns about spending money on consultants. But frankly, we're at a position on this council that we need to fine tune and clarify how staff and council are speaking with each other and with within that. So we need, we need to filter out certain amounts of information, keeping all the brains in in spots. But what what intrigued me on the on the report is I was reading today in relationship to meeting number three, looking at what blue sky thinking has staff done about ways to increase diversity of revenues in the short and long terms for producing and delivering clean water other than raising rates? How do we filter that? And then how do we balance the wants, needs, and desires of our residents moving forward? Because that's a critical portion right there. So I appreciate the fact that my colleagues are concerned about the cost in a time like this. But this is extremely relevant and it's much more relevant today than it was the day before. And it's much more relevant today than it was the day before, and it'll be more relevant the day after. So I'm in favor of moving ahead on this. I am absolutely, and I will keep pounding this fact for council meetings and for any other council meetings, we have to be face to face. We have to make decisions in a room around a round table, and I don't care if that table's 200 feet long. We have to be able to see each other. If we have to sit at all four corners of the rec center, I'm in favor of that as long as we can see each other. And if we don't have the facilities, then we'll get we'll get little blowhorns that we can use. So that's that's my opinion on that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Seymour. I did want to check and make sure Counselor Vols, do you have any questions or comments before I make make mine?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I will just say, I I probably agree with what Counselor Seymour just voiced. I support this. I think if we aren't getting questions answered, I think this might be an opportunity for for that to break that impasse. So I think like Ms. Bergman just said, we may be talking past each other even on council and amongst staff. So I think this is a very valuable opportunity for us to kind of maybe break an impasse. I would, just from the technical standpoint, I would prefer once a week. I think twice a week might be more than I can handle. So is there any way to do 90 minutes? Or how do we land on two hours? That seems like kind of a a long single session. But is there is that like the a good sweet spot to get into to these details or?
Do I just get to respond? Or do I have to be called upon? I can just go. Thanks. I suck at this kind of formal stuff as you'll learn if we work together. So I do my best. So I guess my my response is I winged it, I guess. Mostly what I did is I watched all of your council meetings when you talked about it and gauge the level of information that you seem to need, the level of question and answer that seems to happen so that we could have enough time to get successfully to closure to the best of our ability on the information exchange and discussion on each item. They might be shorter. I don't know. They might be longer. We might go two hours on one and be like, okay, we're sleepy. We would like to, you know, continue this later. I don't know. Best guess, I'm open to to changing it and then having more more shorter meetings if that's what's easier on your lives. I know that these these video meetings take a lot out of people.
All right. Thank you for that answer. I I support the proposal. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vols. Are you completely at this time finished? I believe he is.
Yes, yes, thank you very much.
So I want to agree with Counselor Seymour and Counselor Vols. I think Counselor Seymour said it very well. You know, this water rates has been an issue in the community for a while. And I think I have heard consistently from Dave Demont, Counselor Demont. He has not changed his position that he really wanted some blue sky thinking. I've heard, and I believe each one of my colleagues really care about making sure we provide safe, reliable drinking water and want to make sure we're doing our responsibility and investing in our infrastructure, but also are very concerned about the human costs of high rates. And so and I've been in kind of circular meetings where it feels like we're asking the same questions. And so I actually really welcome a third party to say you're talking past each other and to and to kind of ask us to really hear the question and really hear the answers. So I think that there's going to be benefit in this. Earlier tonight, both Counselor Demont and Counselor Smith mentioned just really a lot of citizen emails, and I too have received a lot of citizen emails. And so this feels more timely and more important than ever right now, as we have so many residents that are hit in a financial crisis and we're in the middle of a drought. So I think that the timing is good to be having this conversation tonight, although I wish we had a full council. As far as frequency, I would be supportive of a week or two weeks between meetings. I think much longer than that that we lose some momentum and we're like kind of having to refresh where we were at. So I obviously want to give staff and and Ms. Bergman enough time to respond to maybe questions that arose. But I think a certain level of momentum is is better for these types of conversations. As a council, I have to say, we've done very well. Even the few times where we've had the opportunity to hear each other's perspectives, find the common ground and then look for ways to to move that forward. So whether that was our strategic and budgeting retreat where I was really impressed with the level of common ground we found. Or when it was we started to adopt having a certain amount of time at study sessions to bring up ideas that counselors have. One of the frustration of serving on council is we don't we don't have the opportunity. We have to have public meetings. And so we don't have the the opportunity to have ideas and and voice concerns with each other as a body. And so I do like that this affords it. I really truly appreciate both Counselor Demont and Counselor Smith's concerns about the $10,000 for consultant costs. But this has been a big issue. It's impacting a lot of our residents. It's impacting council and I think staff dynamics. And so I think it's well worth the investment so that we are able to come up with the best policy decisions for our communities. So I will be supporting it. And those are my two cents in regards to the initial question. Does anyone have follow up? Oh, already see it. Counselor Demont, it looks like you were in the queue first.
Thank you. I I appreciate your perspective. However, I feel like, and it's interesting because I do think it's like we're in different meetings. I don't, you know, I sometimes don't understand even some of the comments about us always finding common ground because that's that's just hasn't been my experience in my three years on council, specifically on this specific topic. And I find it frustrating, although I do think we need to do something different. And it's been much like banging my head into a wall to have this conversation. I I question whether or not bringing in a third party is going to do that for us. Because really, that's going to take the members of this body to actually listen to each other, myself included, to have a conversation. I don't see how bringing a third person into that is is going to do that for us. Because I think there's some very different ideologies. And, you know, this specific topic I find frustrating because it's it's over and over been asserted that people who disagree, which has mostly been me, because the last time we did it, I was the only one who voted against this. It's because I don't understand, and that's very much not the case. And so I think part of the frustration, even in this exercise, is we're going to have it explained to us again. And I appreciate we have two new members of council and, you know, refreshers are always good. But what I fear is that this is going to be another memo of FAQs that is tone deaf and does not accommodate the issues that I'm trying to address, which is relieving the residents of high water rates at a at a rate that they can't keep up with. You know, so that's my big concern with it. It's not that I'm afraid to have a conversation. I'm a very candid person. I'm very transparent with what I think. But consistently being explained to why I'm wrong is not a conversation. And I I guarantee that Ms. Bergman is great at what she does. I had a very great conversation with her. And I think she was very in tuned from my perspective to what she saw and the way I feel with these council meetings. But, you know, that's going to take members of this body to change that. That's, you know, not going to take a third third party. The other portion again that I'm frustrated with is the staffing. And we have organization that should be holding holding itself accountable to the council that was put here duly elected by the rep by the citizens of Westminster. So that's the other thing that I'm very concerned about. You know, and so there's varying degrees of why this just doesn't feel right to me and it doesn't make sense. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear about that.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Demont. I see that we also have a follow up question from Counselor Smith.
Yes, thank you. Are we looking to hold all of these sessions by the end of the year?
What are you asking me or staff?
Either either or.
So I'd love to hear from from maybe Max on that. My understanding is there is some general urgency to get it done sort of by the end of the year, but we don't have our pants on fire to do it like right now. Max, did I mistake? Probably.
No, you didn't misstate it, Heather. I think we have opportunity and time to work through this at a pace that makes sense to city council. The ultimate objective for staff would be to arrive at the end of the first quarter of 2021, much as much as we try each budget cycle to arrive at an agreed upon rate recommendation for 2022. So the more work that we can get done, say, before the end of the calendar year, the better. And you know, that that's probably the best boundary or parameter that I can put on it, which would still get us to an end of first quarter 2021 finish line. So that, again, it wouldn't interrupt the rest of the budget work you need to do in 2021 or the rest of the budget for 2022, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you. Just listening to my colleagues, I part of part of where I stand in it's even more concerning to me where we feel like we are talking past this issue and we might. And it feels like we are. However, I feel like if we are talking it past, talking past this issue, we're talking it past more than just this issue. And so I feel that with having a facilitator with a hot, let's say it's a hot topic of development or water or street maintenance or something of a core, another core service. I feel that if this is the way we're going, we're always going to need a facilitator in that regard. And so I don't feel comfortable moving forward, talking past hot topic issues that we need a facilitator for. And and Ms. Bergman, I mean, no disrespect for you. So I mean, what you produced and what I read through all of the questions, it seemed like you encapsulated a lot of what we were talking about. A lot of what I've heard consistently with our council. But I just feel that that this isn't this is very much needed. I appreciate if we have with staff multiple study sessions on this topic. Now, I will admit, I am new. I maybe I'm lacking part of the understanding, but I'm doing my research and I'm doing my due diligence to understand fully where we're at and how we got here and how we can be better for residents. And so I feel that if, I mean, just point point in case is the points that were given to council about the water just this afternoon, about an hour before we got on to our study session. And I feel very much that they were the questions were answered. But were they really answered? I don't feel that they were answered. I don't feel I feel like it was a very public relation, very PR driven. And I think you and I talked about this, Ms. Bergman. I feel that it's very just big ballooned answer. I don't feel like it's just answering the questions of our residents and those that want to know specifically council. And so part of me also feels that we would get past a lot of these talking past each other if we were able to meet. And I don't mean just in person because I'm very much an in person type of communicator. But I mean that holding one on one sessions where all of the information isn't shared. And so that to me, we can cut down on the talking past each other if we are communicating as one body, right? And not singly with staff members or city managers. So I feel as much as I want to move forward with this, and I I think it's an incredibly important topic. Like I said, it's relevant. I can't get there on moving forward with this. It just, to me, for different aspects, as Counselor Demont, it just doesn't feel right from a staff perspective. I have that that background knowledge. I just can't get there. And I apologize, Ms. Bergman, but but thank you very much for your work.
Absolutely. And please don't apologize. It's totally fine. I'm cool, girl.
Thank you.
Counselor Smith, is that all? Or do you have any further comments?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to formally go through then and poll council. I'm going to start with Counselor Demont. Would you like us to move forward?
I'm going to say no, but I would also like to add if the majority of council says that they're going to go forward with this, I obviously will fully participate and do my best to engage in the conversation. But I do not think this is something we should be spending money on. Thank you.
Do you mind if I ask you a follow up question, Counselor Demont? In the event the majority of council decides to go forward, do you have a preference on frequency of meetings? I want to make sure that we're really respectful of everybody's time commitments.
We can work through that part as long as we we meet up with people's schedules. I don't have a preference on that, to be honest.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Seymour.
I'm going to be yes. And as far as timing, I, you know, I don't want to spread them out too far either because I I agree with Ms. Bergman. You lose momentum.
Thank you very much. Counselor Smith.
Thank you. I will move forward if the majority of my colleagues want to move forward. Again, like I said, it's a very important conversation for all of us to be having. And as far as scheduling, I would suggest, for me personally, I would suggest maybe right before or after Labor Day. Just time commitment wise for the next few weeks for me. But every other week would be welcomed as far as what we can accomplish. I can get there, but we can work scheduling out. I can I can make it. I can make it work.
Thank you. Counselor Vols.
Yeah, I I said earlier, and I will repeat, I support this proposal and frequency of meetings, I think I spoke about earlier. Can't do any, I probably can't do anything prior to Labor Day. So just with that caveat, I've got, I'm going to be out of town and won't be available. So but thank you. I do support this proposal. I think it's very important to our residents and for all of us working on this. Thank you.
Okay, I also would like to move forward with this. I hear the concerns of both my colleagues and I heard the frustration in Counselor Demont's voice. I think some of his frustration maybe is addressed and and will get us out of maybe myself included, some of our entrenched thinking on this item. So and I hope that a fringe benefit might be that through this facilitation, it improves our ability to interact with each other, to hear each other and to communicate to each other. And maybe that's, you know, a perk of going through this. And we get better and better at that throughout time. I think as a council, we've been dealt kind of a hard blow. We haven't had a very much opportunity to get to know each other through face to face meetings. I've heard that also loudly from this from my colleagues that most of you are really anxious to get back to face to face meetings. It looks like the data in Colorado is positive for that happening, maybe sooner than we had thought even just a few weeks ago. So I will keep my fingers crossed. But I am supportive of this moving forward. I will encourage our colleagues who are not on council tonight, who are not present tonight, to to listen to the tape of this and to let us know at a future date what their preference is as we do not have a I mean, we have three of us tonight. I don't know how. May I ask Michelle Parker or Barbara Opie or Dave Frankel, does this move forward when the majority of us here? This is not a vote. This is just, I guess, direction. So I don't know how this works. Will it be back before us?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This is Dave Frankel, City Attorney. I think that, you know, the consensus tonight would be also informed at the next meeting when Counselor Scully and Mayor Atchison are able to voice their positions. But I I think that having a majority of those in attendance tonight being supportive of moving forward, I'm comfortable moving forward to the extent that we will soon have an opportunity, I believe, to hear from two other elected members at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager Barbara Opie or Ms. Bergman, do you have any follow up comments?
I have one if, but I'm happy to go after Barbara if you have a final thought, Barbara.
Go ahead, Heather, and then I'll go after you. That's fine. But that works.
Um, so I just wanted to address just a couple of comments and and So, I just wanted to address just a couple of comments, and, and thing one, I'm really sensitive to this idea of, you know what I don't need, is someone to tell me the things that they've already told me, and hope that somehow I, I receive that information differently. And I, and I get that. So one of, one of the things that I've been thinking about is, is not just the reiterating of the information, but, and some of the other questions, our comments got to this, about, like, you got an answer, but did it actually answer the question that you had? And sometimes people answer the question that they think they heard, or that they wish you had asked, not with any ill intent, but it's just a weird communication thing that happens, and I think I could help a little bit with that. The other thing that I actually want to get, get you to is more of this discussion among council members, so it's not, do you understand the way that we calculate rates based on volume and whatever, but rather, do you understand why I'm struggling with this, with this issue? Do you understand why, when you answer the question that way, I still am not satisfied? And so it'll be more of a discussion, they have to all start with those presentations, just to make sure that we have the right information to talk about, but I'm really interested more in your discussion with each other, and even with staff, than I am in the actual, the factual nature of the, no, but seriously, here's just the facts, kind of presentation. So I, I share that interest that some of you have identified. The other thing I want to stress is, I have zero interest in creating a dependency of this council, or any council, or any group on a facilitator, or on me in particular. I do find that there's some skill building that happens when you work with a facilitator, where you create a new pattern, or a new check in your own mind that goes, oh, right, but when I did that, that one time, Heather said, try this another way. And that we might actually do some of that changing of patterns and habits and behaviors that you can carry forward if you spend a little bit of time with me. I'm not a wizard, I'm not trying to make you different people, but I do find that sometimes the way that I ask questions, and push a little, and probe, and, and laugh, as you've noticed, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna crack myself up, even if I'm not cracking you up, that it can just sort of change the way that you, that you, that you, that you learn to communicate with each other, and it might actually pay dividends in some of those other conversations that you have ahead. Because I sure know that being on city council isn't just one hard issue, and then it's all sunshine and kittens, y'all got hard issues all the time, and I definitely share your interest in not creating a dependency going forward. So that's it for me. Barbara, go ahead.
Thank you, Heather, and appreciate your help with us, with this process and getting this moving forward. City Council, I did want to circle back, and I think Heather hit it on, on the head, which is, we have, we believe we've addressed all the questions that have been presented to us by city council over the year, and we believe that those have been addressed completely now. As Heather alluded to, maybe there's a difference in nuance of how the question is answered, and, and what we believe we've answered. But I do want to stress that, as, as staff understands, we've covered all the questions that have been submitted, at least to date. Beyond that, I think one of the things that Heather brings to this conversation is the ability to help us get back to basics of getting concurrence on what those core components that go into rate modeling. And so making sure that we are all on the same page, and if there are different assumptions that need to be made moving forward, that we get council to help provide that direction, provide some feedback to that conversation, and help us as we move forward as the future rates get developed. So I think that's pretty important. Want to give Matt one last opportunity to provide any other comments, if I've missed anything, and then we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. This was certainly helpful for me to listen to that conversation, and I, I appreciate that there's frustration, I appreciate that there, that there may be a concern with the method or style of communication, and messages that are intended, may not be received as they were intended, but just to repeat what Barbara said, you know, on behalf of the Public Works and Utilities Department, utility billing within the Finance Department, and all the departments that support the Enterprise Utility, I, I can say with 100% confidence that we've made an honest, factual, and thorough effort to answer every question that's come from a council member directly, or from a citizen directly, or from a citizen to a council member, to staff. I, I, I feel like that also needs to be said, that there is a constant effort to try to answer these questions as they come.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Director Kirschbaum, thank you, Ms. Bergman, and thank you, Acting City Manager Barbara Opie, for this conversation. Unless there are any other questions or comments from my colleagues, we'll move on to our next presentation. Okay. For our next presentation, thank you, Heather, thank you, Ms. Bergman. Presentation, we are gonna have the results of the measure, of the ballot measure feasibility survey. I believe that Acting City Manager Barbara Opie, Assistant City Manager Chris Lindsay, and then I believe it is Lori Weigel with Newbridge, are going to make the presentation on this topic.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll turn it over directly to Chris Lindsay, Assistant City Manager, who's been facilitating this process. Chris?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, and City Council, and members of the public. At the, at the budget retreat on July 26th, City Council provided direction to staff to pursue ballot measure feasibility study. Staff has been working with Newbridge Strategy to pursue this research and this poll. Lori Weigel is the principal of Newbridge, and she's available tonight to speak with us, and is gonna present a number of slides here in a moment. Lori's been conducting polls in the Colorado area for 23 years. In the 2018 election, her firm helped with 18 ballot measures, and all of those were victorious. They came highly recommended. And also, I would just point in something that's close to home, they worked and did polling with Highland Hills Parks and Rec District on their recent ballot measures. They were also able to work with us on a very quick timeframe following that, that retreat, and we're back with you in less than a month to present the data, present the data as discussed. So with that, I would, I would invite Lori to come onboard and start with her presentation.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now, great, thank you, sorry, it wasn't letting me unmute myself. So thank you for having me. I'm not gonna go on camera, just because I want to make sure that everyone's focus is on the public opinion data that we're gonna be showing here. And so I thank you for that kind introduction, and the opportunity to, to be here this evening, virtually, of course. So I just want to tell everyone what we did, so on the next page, I'll just give you a quick glimpse, and then we'll walk through the, the key findings from the survey that we conducted. And we have worked with, oh gosh, we've worked with municipalities, counties, special districts, all throughout the state. So it's really, I think, something that my firm has come to specialize in, is really understanding the priorities of residents, and how they might respond to different proposals. And it's a real opportunity to get to know and hear a little bit about what they're, what they find most important, and what they think of how this, how things in the city are going. So it's why I enjoy the work that I do. And in this case, we talked to 400 residents throughout the city. They were invited a couple of different ways, so we have come to find, as some of you might be in this category, that not everyone enjoys answering their phone. And so we sent an invitation indicating that we just wanted to hear their ideas, and respond to a few questions via an online survey, and that was sent via email, and some people were, with cell phones, were given that opportunity to click through via text. And then also live telephone interviews that were conducted mostly on cell phone, but also some on landlines. And that's really become sort of the, the regular standard that we're using, in order to make sure that we really get a broad and representative, representation of residents throughout any community. Those interviews were connected August 6th through 12th, so we're just five days after that, with a really quick turnaround, but we were happy to do it. Now, with any surveys, you all know, and you'll see these throughout this crazy election season, of course, there's a margin of error. In this case, since we were allowing some people to opt-in, it's called a credibility interval, but it's basically the same thing, it's about five and a half percent in this case. So let's talk about the fun stuff, and, and hit some of the highlights of this data on the next slide. You all had conducted a survey in 2018, and this is a really standard question, so we asked it exactly as the other polling firm had done in 2018. And really, again, I'm gonna evoke margin of error here, right off the bat, because these numbers are really, basically within margin of error of each other, and it really speaks to the positive view that people generally have for this city, where we have seven and 10 today, telling us that they believe things are headed in the right direction, which is nearly three times as many who say that things are off, on the wrong track. There was a little higher uncertainty, people saying unsure, in 2018, and that accounts for that difference there, but it's basically within margin of error, despite all this craziness with the pandemic and all of that, we've really seen views about local government have often either held steady, or even improved, much as we're seeing here. We also asked a question on the next slide, given the focus and the topics that we wanted to cover, about how much confidence that they have in city government to spend the funds from a future tax proposal wisely. This was asked a little bit later in the survey, after they'd heard a couple of different proposals, and we had three in five saying they felt either very, or somewhat confident in the city, in how the city would handle those funds, about, about one in three indicating they were either not at all, or not very confident in the city's potential handling of those funds. And again, that's, that's a generally positive response, this is very much in the range of what we often see in many communities around the state. We also gave people, again, a little bit later in the survey, but I think it sort of sets the tone for what we're talking about here, an opportunity to tell us some of their priorities. And on the next slide, there we go, great. You can see that one of the things that we asked, we asked this randomized battery of different issues, and I'm gonna show you two slides, the second tier in the next second, where we basically gave them a number of different responsibilities of city government, placed in the context that, you know, that could be affected if tax revenues decrease, but also just basically framing it in the, in the idea of what they want to make sure is continued, you know, given, given these, given these stressful times that I know you guys are thinking about in terms of budgets. Now, these were all randomized, so everybody was hearing these, or most people were hearing these in very different orders, but they've been categorized here by those who were either rating these as extremely important, or very important. Once we, we also included somewhat important or non-important, but once we have the somewhat importance in here, it's almost everyone, and it really is just sort of too overwhelming. So we tend to look at those saying extremely or very important, is really helping us to understand residents' priorities, and we found that to be the most helpful. And so you can see that there's another, a number of themes here that kind of emerge. We're talking about emergency response, and public safety, things like providing training for law enforcement, but also things like taking care of the infrastructure that most people think of first, if we say infrastructure, which is maintaining city streets and bridges, or providing snow plowing, or, you know, those types of things. A basically generic phrase about continuing to provide vital city services was also something that rose to the fore. And then interestingly, we also tested providing mental health services, that's something we've seen in ballot measures, that we've tested in the city of Denver, and in mountain communities, that's something that's really resonated as well, even prior to the pandemic. So basically, on all of these, we have seven and 10 or greater, moving up to almost nine and 10, when it comes to some of those public safety and emergency response services, telling us that these are extremely or very important to them. On the next slide, and again, this isn't to say that people don't want these other services, they were just rating them a somewhat lower in terms of the overall intensity, but all but one had a majority rating these as extremely or very important. And again, some of these may be that they simply see these as doing so well, that they may not think that, you know, additional funds, or, you know, continued funding is something that really needs to happen there. So again, that, that goes into just some different phrasing, some of those were split in, we split the sample into representative halves, and they heard slightly different wording on a few, to see if there was a difference in response. But generally, other than affordable housing, or emergency housing assistance at the bottom there, most of these were things that people really felt are, are relatively important responsibilities for the city, to make sure that continued funding is there. So, how do we do that? And that's where we get to the other questions that we asked. So if you move forward for me on the slides, keep going, one more. So we asked a, a sales tax proposal, we actually asked two different versions of this, half heard 1/10 of 1% sales tax, half heard 1/4 of 1% sales tax, that would go to funding a number of the responsibilities that we just saw there, especially focused on just continuing vital city services. So, they basically, both of them rated within margin of error of each other, so in order, you know, get it, make it a little bit easier to see, we just collapsed those two, because we basically got just under half telling us, and of course, that's the critical 50% threshold, because as we well know, 50% is that magic number, to get above that, 50% plus one vote to get above that is what's needed in order to, to be successful. 31% just flat out said, nope, I don't want an increase in the sales tax. We had about one in five either leaning one way or the other, but initially holding back, and saying they're unsure of how they felt about voting on this specific proposal at this time. And that, what that tells us is those people tend to be holding back for a reason, typically, especially this close to an election, I think there's 77 days left, not that I'm counting, but, but it's really hard to move numbers up, that really requires some sustained communications or indications of need. The other thing I would note is just that we have about 24% indicating that if the election were held today, they would definitely vote yes, but basically equal 23% saying they definitely vote no. So this is not sort of at the level where one might say, oh yeah, great, go for it, guys, this is, you know, people are ready to support a sales tax increase, needless to say. That said, on the next slide, when we asked them about different mechanisms, we got much the same response that was evident in the 2018 polling, where there was a vast preference for a sales tax over a property tax, where they given that choice. Of course, they're not given that choice on, you know, in terms of a ballot measure, they just see one, like they saw before. So it's striking that 48% just again, told us that the sales tax is what they prefer, only one in 10 said a property tax is what they prefer, 15% felt no difference, and then 25% by one and four, just said, nope, neither one, I don't want a sales, any sort of tax increase of that nature. And this is a really typical dynamic, again, it's very, very close to, to when a slightly different question was asked, posting up a sales tax versus a property tax two years ago. So voters are nothing if not consistent in, in, in the city. And then, on the next slide, we also asked, after that sales tax proposal, and we just wanted you to see the exact language of what we asked, was also a proposal related to marijuana, and imposing an additional sales tax of 5% on the sale of retail marijuana and related products sold within the city, and then those uses being not just, you know, not just city services, but also the enforcement and regulation of that industry. So when we asked that, on the next slide, you can see that we got a boosted response compared to what we heard from a sales tax, with 57% indicating that if the election were held today, they would vote yes. But you can see the very, and that's, again, double what those who said they would initially vote no. But you can see the very different response in terms of those feeling definite about how they're responding here, 42% definitely yes, versus 20% definitely no. So those definite people don't- So those definite people don't tend to shift quite as much over the course of, say, 77 days. So it really indicates a fairly dramatic distinction in terms of the intensity of the response here. Now, we also followed that up. We were a little curious based on based on some of what I heard from, from staff on how much people knew about marijuana sales, if they even were allowed in the city. So on the next slide, you can see we asked follow-ups.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Is there any way you could go back to the slide where you explained the question for marijuana? I, you went through it a little quick, and I'm just wanted to make sure I understood exactly what was put across to the callers or the, the people who participated.
Yeah, so I'll leave that here. It, it basically follows some of the excise tax language, and I'm not an attorney, so don't hold me to this legal explanation, but basically follows some of the excise tax or additional sales taxes that have been placed on this product in other cities.
Okay, great. That, I, I was able to read it now. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Okay, so let's see. Yeah, there we go. So we asked them if mayor, based on what they had seen or heard, does the city of Westminster currently allow the sale of marijuana within the city or not, or are you unsure? And we have almost half say, boy, I don't know. So 48% chose that response. Thirty-one percent actually said yes, that the city allows the sale of marijuana within its borders. Only one in five said no, that it's not allowed for sale in Westminster. So it tells you that there's quite a bit of confusion over what the status quo is right now. But when we asked them, when we told them on the next slide, you can see the exact wording towards the bottom. We said, so actually, at this time, marijuana is not sold in the city of Westminster. Excuse me. Do you support or oppose marijuana being sold and taxed in the city? And we had 61% indicate support, 36% opposed. And again, we saw a stronger indication of support than opposition. So some fairly, well, I found it interesting or revealing dynamics in terms of how people are responding. Again, that 61% is basically within margin of error of that tax. The response to the, the tax ballot, but clearly voters are not exactly sure what the current state is of marijuana sales in the city. And so moving to the next slide. There we go. Just to sum up, these key findings. Based on this very recent survey, we've definitely found that people are positive, continue to be positive, basically in line with where they responded two years ago about the direction of the city. They have confidence in the way their tax dollars are spent generally. And there's a clear focus, of course, in thinking about city priorities on public safety and roads and sort of vital course and services that they want to ensure are continued. Although definitely, I will say, I saw a few years ago when, when the state was undergoing budget cuts after 2008. The one thing that people knew was whether the libraries were open or not, had they cut back hours. Because that was something experienced that many of them had, and that was their biggest evidence of the cutbacks was when there were cutbacks to libraries. So you never know what's going to like affect people the most, but but right now, their support for sales tax is just really not at majority support. As I mentioned, it's fairly rare for support to increase this close to an election. Despite that, it's not as if a property tax would be more palatable. They are pretty clear and consistent on that point as well. The one thing that we tested where we saw there was majority support was for the sale and taxing marijuana. Obviously, a poll can't tell you everything, but it definitely did, did generally, you know, sort of indicate that at least on that front, there is support and the experience that I've seen has been that generally these types of measures fare better in larger turnout elections like this upcoming November. That said, we know that voters are somewhat confused about the whether or not marijuana is currently sold within the city. But there is, again, a fairly solid majority there indicating support unless they know that it's not already being sold in the city. So I'm happy to ask questions. Maybe we can leave this up for just a little bit in case we need to go back to these slides again.
So I really want to thank Lori for the work she and her firm have done. And, and I want to introduce Larry Door to give us a little wrap up and connect us back to some of the conversations we had back in July when we began to talk about this research.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. This is Larry Door, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy City Manager speaking. I want to thank you, Ms. Weigle, for your quick work on this survey. I know that this information is keenly valuable to our Mayor Pretend and City Council here tonight and to our Westminster community, because there is so much at stake regarding this financial crisis and how the city might respond. Mayor Pretend, I'm just quickly looking at the chat, and it appears as though there that it's your desire to continue with questions and answers. And if I may, just for additional context, just talk a little bit about the reason for this survey and information. It harks back, as Mr. Lindsay described, to the July 26th meeting of the City Council, in which we outlined some of our estimates for revenue loss and potential service impacts. We know that the response to this COVID-19 financial crisis will be a holistic mix of reductions in administrative expenditures of the city, utilization of reserves. Also, under consideration, the council will be capital project timing and feasibility of various capital projects, but also the various and many lines of business service to the community. The level of those services and whether or not they can be continued. And then, of course, last but not least, the idea of revenue generation to mitigate the circumstances of the COVID-19 financial crisis. So with all of these things at stake, it was your direction to engage the best and brightest to assist us, also affirm like Ms. Weigles, who could respond and mobilize very, very quickly. Our staff merely described the presentation that was made in July and asked Ms. Weigle and her, her firm to work up these various survey questions that fit various surveys that she and her firm have conducted in the past and that struck upon the guidance and direction that you had provided. So the idea is for us to have, again, this multi-point response to the financial crisis. As a next step, and part of this, and part of the reason for this very hard work in a short period of time is should council choose to refer one or more of these items to the voters this November? We're on a very tight timeline of just a number of days left in order for council to approve a resolution that would refer one of these questions to the ballot. I realize that that is a very tight timeline and is not ideal. In fact, it, it creates a very difficult situation and very difficult choices for sure. But it's a very tight timeline. We're wanting to, on the one hand, better understand the gap, the financial gap and the, the lost revenue. But on the other hand, there's just this short window of time to let Westminster voters have a say in how this might be mitigated. And I think we got some real valuable insights from the report that Ms. Weigle just presented. So in terms of next steps, Mayor Pretend, Council, we would, of course, welcome your questions as to the survey and any of the details of it. But ultimately, it's the timeline that's right at hand is to get your direction very quickly so that our city attorney's office could present to you a resolution that would meet your desires relative to any revenue change that would be referred to the Westminster voters just within a week. So with that, Mayor Pretend, and on behalf of Lori Weigle and her firm, thank you. And thank you to Assistant City Manager Lindsay for all of his work in getting this facilitated in such a short period of time. Mayor Pretend?
Thank you very much, Deputy City Manager Door. I just wanted to real quick look at the, looking in the queue here. Councillor Demont had a question earlier, but I believe you've had that answered. Is that correct, councillor? Or do you have further questions?
I did have my earlier one, but I have further questions, but I'll wait to see if anybody else does, so.
Okay, Councillor Smith is first in queue.
Thank you. When this came forward to us in the strategic planning session, it was good to, to get more information. I think that the majority of us had said that we would like to have more information on this. And this is helpful in understanding kind of the, the thoughts and perspectives of our residents. And with that, I, I don't have questions at this point, but I'm just learning all the information about the questions and what was, what came about of the answers. I'm still not convinced that this is the right way forward to, to put this on the ballot. Not to, not to say that I don't want it to go to the voters. I absolutely do. Because it's their voice and their say in how we get our revenue streams. And so with that, it was my sticky point on this is that we're not moving forward with a wards and districts discussion that we pushed hard for to get on the ballot in November. And as we're not moving forward with that because of the dollar situation that we're in, in the 18 to $30 million deficit, I can't move forward with putting this on the ballot. So if it's, it's an all or nothing approach to me. If we can get the wards and districts on the, the ballot, I'm more than happy to, to say yes to this because it doesn't make sense to do one and not the other. So in my perspective, great information and something that I would look to put on the ballot for 2021. But for this year, if, again, if it's on that, it's an all or nothing for me. So I might have other questions, but thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Councillor Smith. Councillor Demont, do you have any questions at this time? Or do you want to follow up with your questions at this time?
Yeah, thank you. One thing I'm curious about that just kind of came to mind as Councillor Smith was talking. Is there any cost savings to us doing multiple things on the ballot at once? So we've already committed at this point to put the wards and just wards or districts on the ballot next year. So I'm just curious, and as she talked about that, I just wanted to know, is there a cost savings if we did, you know, those two things this year versus next year?
Oh, go ahead.
I beg your pardon, Mayor Pretend. Larry Door speaking again. I was just going to invite the city clerk, Michelle Parker, to talk about election expenses. And I don't want to, I, I think I know the answer to this, but since we have a an expert, Ms. Parker, could you give a comment to Councillor Demont's question, please?
Yeah, certainly can, Larry. Thank you. This is Michelle Parker, the city clerk. The way that elections, that, well, the way that we are billed for elections is actually rather complex and very hard to pinpoint this far in advance. The way that we're charged for elections is dependent on some things that are that we can pinpoint, such as the number of registered voters we have, and then some things that we can't pinpoint, which is how many other municipalities or jurisdictions might join the coordinated, the coordinated election with the county clerks. So all of those final costs are determined by multiple things. Number one, how many items you put on the ballot. The charge goes up, actually, the more room you take on the ballot. But it also depends on how many others will be putting items on the ballot. It also depends on the turnout for any given election. And it also depends on how many final ballots are counted and how many staff that takes by each county. So I think there could potentially be cost savings if we were putting questions at the same time that we're putting, for instance, you know, more than one question, or if it was during a normal election year for us. And with the caveat that many other municipalities had other questions that they were adding to the ballot so that our prorated amount was divided up by more participants. And again, high turnout is going to technically increase costs because there is going to require more staff from both of the counties to adjudicate ballots, to process those ballots, the printing costs go up, et cetera, et cetera. But, but that's really the best answer I can give you. Pinpointing it this far out is incredibly difficult. It, it really does require a little bit of a crystal ball in terms of what the turnout is going to look like.
Fair enough. I, I guess that's, I understand all those complexities, but it would cost was part of the reason why we were not looking to do the wards and districts this year, which I find ironic. But I, I guess you, you did point out some other things too, you know, and this wasn't initially in my thoughts with the, the wards and districts. But as you talked through that, I mean, those are a lot of the reasons why this year would have made more sense. I mean, if we're willing to ask the, the voters to do something to increase our task, tax base, but we're not willing to, you know, take on that additional cost when we're going to have a high turnout year because it's a presidential election to get more participation in the wards and districts question, that is a little frustrating. And that comments more for my colleagues than anything. And the other thing that I have that maybe Mr. Door could answer for me. So, you know, I do think if we're going to look at the marijuana question, there's a couple of things that, that I would want to understand what we're going to do as far as educating the public. And I know we are allowed to educate the public as far as, you know, what that actually does to the city. Talking to council people who were in our seats when they decided to do a moratorium on marijuana in the city when it was legalized in the state. Part of that was off of feedback from the police department. So, you know, and we, this is all moving so quickly that we haven't had an opportunity yet, and I would like that for council as well to be able to make sure that we hear from our police department how this is actually going to impact them. And, you know, because that impact likely is additional cost. And it's also potentially impacts our, our community. So especially with safety be rating, rated so high as a desire for the community, I would be curious on, on that. So that's more of a forward thing that I would want us to do if this moves forward. The other thing, though, Mr. Door is, when did marijuana get on the radar of the executive team as an option for increased tax revenue? Is that with something since COVID? Or is this, you know, some of these things that we've been talking about, were they kind of in the pipeline prior to COVID?
Thank you, Councillor Demont. In terms of, you know, timing or analysis, you know, our job is to think about every potential change that could mitigate the crisis of COVID-19. So certainly, I have understood the tax base and the business mix in the city of Westminster, you know, since before the COVID-19 crisis. So I think staff has had that on mind for years and years as we think about our tax rates, our property tax, sales tax rates compared to other city. That's really our job is to have on hand the differences in the business mix, rates of tax and restrictions and so forth. So, you know, I would just tell you that those are up and top of mind for our financial teams for years and years, for sure. And then when we have a crisis, we're able to present opportunities for council's consideration, always being the choice of the mayor and council. So, yeah, you know, in order to solve this crisis, as I've mentioned, it's really going to be a holistic mix of a lot of different points of change in order to get the community financially sustainable for the, for the future. So, yeah, with that, that's really a function of how this has come before you. And of course, we're looking at all manner of fees and charges and different sources of revenue to make sure that, you know, we can mitigate this as best as possible. So this being one, and it, and obviously, it's one of the larger ones too, you know, in terms of, of what might be produced and, and have an impact.
Well, I, I think that at the end of the day, the right place is with the voters. And here's my concern. And this is, again, probably more for my colleagues. I'm concerned that in March, April, we were told we were going to have probably a $30 million shortfall, and that seemed to be acceptable. And we were going to be able to take that on the chin and move along. We so far haven't done any kind of furloughs. We haven't done, you know, the kind of cost cutting that we've seen in other cities. We haven't done, you know, the kind of cost cutting that we've seen in other cities. Granted, we have done some mitigating of costs to try to, you know, alleviate as much of this pain as possible. But I I still am not connecting the dots, how we went from a thirty million dollar short gap to a potentially eighteen to thirty two million dollar short cap, and it's all of a sudden a crisis. I know that we have talked over the, you know, the last year since I've been on council about us having looming budget problems in the future. And I I don't like that now that we're in this position, we're calling it a crisis and wanting to put something on the ballot. I am uncomfortable with doing that at this point because I feel like we haven't looked inside to the extent that we need to yet, but we're already going out to the voters to say we need more tax base. And I think it's complex for me because I do think if we're ever going to look at something like marijuana, that needs to be with the voters. I just don't know that I'm there this year, and, you know, I would appreciate feedback from my colleagues. But those are some of my concerns that I have right now on moving forward with this at this point.
Thank you, Counselor Demont. Counselor Vols?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This is probably said early on in the very first slide, and somehow I probably missed it. Are these likely voter? These are likely voters, correct?
Yes, they are.
Okay, good. Thank you. I guess just a real general question to staff. Do we have the bandwidth to pull this off? I guess that would be my question if we, or I have a few questions, but my first one is just a more general question. Do we actually have right now the staff bandwidth to pull this off in this tight timeframe?
Thank you, Counselor Vols. Larry Dorr speaking again. Let me see if I can answer that. And I think it's the question on bandwidth is really a two-part question. First, it's the question of if this were voted up by the community, would we have the bandwidth to administer and regulate this new business and so forth? And the answer to that would be yes. That's the that's the purpose of the additional tax. We we would anticipate some additional staff necessary to regulate these businesses, depending on some of the choices that council would have the opportunity to make in the future in terms of separation and the number of businesses that might be allowed and those kinds of things. So first, in terms of the bandwidth to administer and regulate that, hopefully that addresses that dimension of the question. The second question is related to information and engagement with the public. And let me first make sure that this is clear, and City Attorney Frankel will make sure that I I've been very clear about this. And that is, the city would not be involved in any way in doing any sort of campaigning or promotion around this. That would be against the law, and we would not be doing that. However, it's it's common, and I would imagine that the city would want to communicate and provide facts, background, and information to the public relative to this, just as it would in any other matter, especially one is serious as this, that involves taxes and sale of, you know, these adult-related products and so forth. So, yes, I would imagine that it's going to require significant information and communication to the public. And, you know, by coincidence, we're having a little discussion of that a little bit later on in in tonight's meeting. But yes, we we would need to continue to bolster that work in order to have the bandwidth to provide facts, information, and so forth to the public, which which is lawful under the election rules and so forth. So we'd have a little bit of a challenge there for sure. But we think if we continue to bolster up, we'll be able to meet that demand.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for that for that answer, Mr. Dorr. Another aspect of increasing revenues, so on that side of the ledger, would be we have fees. And I think there are a lot of the, there are a lot of fees that city staff or the city manager, I would suppose, can raise on his own. And maybe even without council approval, what are the proposals in place? Or do we have all of that? Is there something afoot or something kind of moving forward on that?
Counselor Vols, I ask you to re-ask your question. You froze up on my end. I don't know if you froze up on everyone's end.
I would be glad to restate that. Thank you, Mayor Protem. My question was, another aspect of raising revenues for the city would be to increase fees. And if we do increase fees, do we get copies of that proposal? Will we know what fees? I think a lot of those fees can be raised through the discretion of the city manager, I believe. Will we know what those are and what what what's being proposed or what's being raised?
Thank you, Counselor Vols, and I'll just repeat the question. There might have been a little bit of breakup there. But this is related to the authority to increase or change fees, if I may call it that. And some may be done by the city manager or his delegates, of course. And certainly, there will be those that, you know, may not either be a material change or rise to the level of communication for council and the public. But of course, any of them that we think would be material or interesting, of course, we would certainly share those with the mayor and council for sure. Others would require, under code, an approval of the city council. Clearly, you and the council would have the opportunity to see all of those and approve them. And then others, under the Colorado Constitution and Westminster Charter, would require voter approval. And so there's sort of those three levels. But I will tell you that we are in a due diligence phase of all of the city's fees and charges as one would expect to make sure that the service received is requisite with the fee charged and is also market competitive and things of that of that nature. As you would imagine, we're working very, very hard on that and starting with some of the more the ones that might have a more material impact. So as those come about, and certainly as we get into budget retreat next month and follow-on study sessions, of course, it would be my job to describe those to you. Ones that are very, very small in nature, maybe just impact a few citizens. We would, we probably wouldn't take up all of council's attention to provide all of those details. But I would imagine absolutely the ones that are material and would impact large numbers of of our residents that we would certainly make council available aware of those changes. Thank you.
Very good. Yeah, okay, thank you. I look forward to that. And then kind of to piggyback on what Counselor Demont said, you know, when will we be getting, and maybe you just referenced this actually, when will we be getting proposals for what kinds of reductions to expenses? So on the expense side versus the revenue side, what are we going to be doing? Or what, you know, the kind of worst-case scenario, the middle-of-the-road, the best-case scenario? When will we get some kind of an idea? When will we first possibly get that information?
Thank you. You know, our first real intense report out was related to those ranges that have been mentioned throughout the night. Those were on July twenty six. It was the eighteen to thirty two million range. I recognize that a lot of folks will describe that as thirty million. And of course, we're taking a short-term and long-term view of things. By the way, that's a, that's the expected decrease in revenue. But then with a decrease in expenses, we expect the net to be obviously a little bit, well, hopefully a lot smaller than that. We've got to, we've got to balance the budget across those five main things that I described just a moment ago. But, you know, first and foremost, we'll have our financial update. We have our twenty pages of reports coming a week from tonight. That'll be just more information, and we are continuing to revise our forecasts for revenues and expenses based on every new piece of data that we get, be it daily, weekly, or monthly. I would anticipate the next large discussion with choices and descriptions and how to balance things is is really going to come in the Saturday budget study session of September nineteenth. We will be getting right to the meat of that in terms of how we can balance things. We'll have yet another month's financial data under our belts. And by that point, we've really got to go ahead and present what we think is our our best forecast for twenty twenty throughout the course of the year and twenty twenty one. And should the council choose to extend the deadline to November thirtieth, we we would have the opportunity to even revise that proposed budget at some point in the future during October and potentially even as as late as November. So I think the first big occasion relative to what you're describing is September nineteenth. And we'll have hours to kind of get into the details of it, Counselor.
Very good. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Dorr, and thank you for all your work on this. I do appreciate it. And thank you for those answers.
Um, Counselor Demont, I see that you have a second question. Would you mind if I asked, before you go into your second round of questioning, if I just asked a few of my questions first? Or was this relevant to the conversation that Counselor Vols and Deputy City Manager Dorr were having?
This is a follow-up of a comment that that Mr. Dorr just made, but I'm I'm happy to hold it, so you can go.
No, that's a, that's a fine. Let's let's ask it while it's relevant.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Yep, thank you. You you just made a comment that just, I was curious for clarification on, Mr. Dorr. You said that some people call it thirty million dollars. I mean, that number was given by you. And when we talked in the budget retreat about eighteen to thirty two million dollars in a crisis, I even asked you to reiterate that that was the number that we heard back in March. So I'm just curious what you mean by some people call it thirty million.
Well, thank you, Counselor Demont. You know, I know that when we're describing the numbers, oftentimes, it's just, it gets verbose to describe that it's a range of estimates based on multiple variables going into a potential forecast that's changing all of the time. So I appreciate that it can be referred to as one number or a range of numbers based on a variety of different variables going in. So I appreciate that it's a very nuanced discussion. Certainly, as far back as March, I did describe it as a revenue decrease of as much as thirty million dollars. Don't don't want to change that description from the past at all. But of course, it's a range. We all know that different, different outcomes are happening all the time in terms of movie theaters not being open and other economic impacts. So it's prudent to describe it as a range. That's, that's how we have presented it in our most recent meeting on the subject and and how we'll do it going forward. But I appreciate that it's it's in conversation or in the media and in other in other situations, it's tough to describe it as a range with a lot of different variables. So I just want to make clear that either choice can be made about describing it. But these are, I I think all would agree, these are very large numbers, whether it's the bottom of the range, the middle of the range, or the top. These are some numbers that we've never seen before.
Great, thank you.
All right, before I ask my questions, I wanted to make sure Counselor Seymour had an opportunity to ask any he may have.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My peers have been asking the questions and have been ticking off, so I think I'm good at this point. Thank you.
Okay, please let me know if you change your mind. So I want to say thank you to Ms. Weigle for the, and I hope I didn't mispronounce your last name, for the presentation. I do have some very specific questions in regards to kind of where the questions were made. I noticed one of the questions you had was in regards to maintaining parks and open spaces. Was that the exact wording that was used, or did we ever use acquire additional?
We did not.
We phrase it as maintenance only?
Uh, we tested maintaining because we were placing all those in the context of essentially maintaining core city services. And we did not test acquiring new parks and open spaces because of that.
Okay, um, shoot. I had hoped, I had thought from the council discussion at our strategic planning and budget retreat, we were pretty clear that we were, that was an area that I thought we had some overlap as a council is looking for opportunities to acquire more open space rather than just maintaining. Okay, um, so I want to.
Sorry. Well, typically, taking care of what is already there is often is often viewed as a, is more important than acquiring new, even though people seem to be out using those new places an awful lot these days. But but that's the typical dynamic we see throughout the state because we do a lot of work on parks and rec districts as well.
I really appreciate that feedback. And locally, we have had a real community conversation on acquisition versus maintenance. And there's been a lot of concern in our community that we were too balanced to maintenance and some of our post-tax. So it it, I think it is maybe a little bit different in Westminster. So I wanted to piggyback on some other questions that my colleagues had in regards to marijuana. Specifically, uh, did we have, we had an opportunity to consult with our police department on that. Counselor Seymour and Counselor Vols and I attended a presentation given maybe eight months ago by Deputy Chief Reeves talking about the hidden costs associated with the legalization of marijuana on policing. And I just wanted to see, have we consulted with our police department on this? What are their thoughts? Is that something that would would happen if we were to say to go forward at this point?
Mayor Protem cites Larry Dorr speaking again. I I want to invite our police chief, Tim Carlson, to go ahead and prepare his microphone to share some comments with you. Of course, as a member of the city's executive leadership team, he was privy to your conversations on July twenty six. He was aware of this polling activity, and I had a chance to share the results with him and so forth in anticipation that there could be some questions there. And I know that he'll have some comments regarding that. And things to consider, of course, obviously, the consumption and the possession in Westminster is legal, has been legal for many, many years, but it's rather this retail sale that would be necessarily the change. So so with that, and just to point out that clarification as we go in. But Chief Carlson, are you there, sir?
I am, Mr. Dorr. Thank you. And good evening, Council, Mayor Protem, and the rest of council. Thank you for inviting me to be part of the conversation. As to the specific question as to retail sales of marijuana in Westminster, we've not done, or we've not had the opportunity to do a lot of data research and so forth specifically related to other cities that have allowed retail marijuana in their jurisdictions. I have some anecdotal information. I don't have a lot of firm data related to expense and calls for service and those kinds of things. I can tell you that as this issue was raised just recently as a potential ballot measure, I have had the opportunity to speak to some of the local police chiefs who have had legalized marijuana in their jurisdictions. And anecdotally and from, again, without hard data, I can tell you in summary that most of those jurisdictions have found that the retail marijuana outlets have been fairly good business partners with the city, that they have not. And again, this is without hard data, but they have not seen some of the increases, for instance, in crime associated with marijuana business around specific marijuana shops in their city. However, having said that, there certainly is a strong recommendation that should a jurisdiction take the opportunity to legalize retail marijuana sales in their city, that those cities pay very close attention to the regulation of that of those businesses and that the individual municipal jurisdictions need to take the responsibility for that regulation far and above what the state does in regulating those businesses. And so there are some significant costs related to that regulation of those businesses and that that regulation process be associated with some other form, some other part of the city rather than the police department, as that is, it is a business regulation as opposed to necessarily criminal violations and so forth. Now, we would still certainly take take action on any criminal violations. But the cost and associated with some of these shops and some of the other jurisdictions that I've talked to have been really related around the regulation as opposed to some of the unfortunate practices. So again, without any any firm data, that's just kind of been the discussion that I've been involved with with a lot of or neighboring jurisdictions who allow this, allow the sales. Now, if council chooses to move forward and put this on the ballot, I think there would be a lot more detail surrounding how we would implement that regulation and the costs associated with it and experiences of other jurisdictions. But at that point, at this point, that would be my comments. And certainly, you know, this, this is an evolving industry. It's legal in the state. The question before us is, do we allow the retail sales? So that's in general what I've been able to come up with at this point. Certainly, we have, as somebody alluded to earlier, Deputy Chief Reeves is one of the most knowledgeable people on this. He immersed himself in this for a number of years as the commander of the drug task force. So should this go forward, we would certainly bring to council some of his expertise and help you understand the costs associated with that kind of regulation and that kind of business.
Thank you very much, Chief. Deputy City Manager Dorr brought up something that I think is important to note. So since consumption. So since consumption and possession is legal in Westminster, just not the retail component at this time or also industrial like production. Do we feel that we're already, some of those costs, the Westminster Police Department is already burdened with without a revenue source to offset it? Or do we feel like those, I mean, I recognize you may not have the data for that, but I just would like to get your thoughts.
I think that's a fair question, and I think, yes, that we've burdened the responsibility for enforcement and taking care of those issues already without the revenue source. I think that's probably a fair statement. Yeah, that's that's how I would, that's how I would answer that.
Okay. The time on such a big issue feels really rushed for me, and it's so hard because I think I think my colleagues have spoken about, you know, some of our hesitation to move forward towards in districts. For me was how much expense would go into and not really so much the ballot measure for me, but the expense into like doing it well and researching how we would divvy up, you know, our our community to avoid like gerrymandering to make sure it was objective and fair. You know, if you're going to make a massive change to our charter in that in that case, wanting to do it well and hiring the appropriate people. With marijuana legalization, I would imagine there's, as as our police chief has just mentioned, there would be a lot of regulatory that are zoning. Everything is really making this as as little of a nuisance to the quality of life of our residents, that it's not, you know, spaced in, you know, next to schools or other areas that it may not be appropriate. And I remember when we were just looking at chicken and bees, that took ages for our 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 city to have the capacity to look at like what are best practices in other communities and come up with a proposal. What comes first in this situation, like when we bring the the question to the voters and then we would discuss? Because I feel like I remember when marijuana was first legalized, it might have been medical marijuana. It wasn't like there was a lot of things that needed to be worked out, and there were sightings that were right next to schools and stuff like that. So how do we prevent having a harm like that for the community and doing this well and thoughtfully and intentionally in the timeline we have? Very run on question, I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll take a shot at answering that. Of course, if we had the luxury of time for our community, we would prepare a very detailed and extensive business case that would provide a range of estimated costs and a variety of different positive and negative impacts and so forth. And we would study that, just as you described, for the keeping and and other public policy choices that the city council has to make. We don't have that opportunity at this time, unfortunately. And we we posed that to Ms. Weigle and it asked about how we might, how we might guide that discussion. And what we did is just really made a reasonable inference that the additional sales tax that would be asked of the voters in the question is comparable to what's happening in other cities. So we think that we can infer that this additional amount of sales tax would, comparatively speaking, be reasonable to provide for the reasonable administrative and and regulation costs. Certainly, it it should cost just about as much to regulate marijuana businesses in Westminster versus neighboring communities, and that rate of sales drives the amount of necessary regulation, and they're somewhat interrelated to each other. In other words, if there was just one business open, there would be less tax revenue from this supplemental tax rate and less money needed for regulation. And in the opposite, the opposite would be true. There'd be a greater economy, more sales, more tax revenue, and more regulation needed. So we were, Ms. Weigle asked the question about the secondary tax, assuming that that would be necessary to provide for that regulation. It is an assumption, and it is one that comes with some risks, certainly. And again, our job being to present to you these, this difficult choice and these survey results with the idea that we just have this very, very limited time, but because of the matter at hand with the finances, that it's something that council might want to consider and hence our our results. But we believe that this ask of the additional rate of tax would provide for the administrative costs and regulation. I do not, but I do not have on hand a detailed business case with sources and uses of funds and number of FTE required and, you know, printing and mailing and communications costs and and those kinds of things. And I will say that, of course, obviously, everybody knows this is a fairly mature industry and is happening in jurisdictions across the front range. So we would, I would envision if this were to become a question for the voters, a parallel process where our staff would work very hard to better understand the regulatory costs and, you know, provide a number of different choices for council in terms of regulation and how all of those details might work. We haven't had the time to invest in that just at this point and not knowing whether or not this would be of interest to council or how the poll results might come through. We haven't yet prepared those those answers.
Okay, and I apologize, you probably just said this and I might have missed in in the conversation, but phasing wise, would we have to have how we would regulate it prior to having crafted the ballot language? Or do you see what I'm saying? Would that have to be a portion of the ballot language is what the regulatory framework would be for that? Or can we determine the regulatory framework after the fact?
Yeah, I might defer to City Attorney Frankel on this, but I'll I'll just make a first blush at this. But I think what we've seen in other communities is a little bit of each, which is council would need to understand, if this were referred to the voters, council would need to understand its series of potential choices as to how and when to regulate things like distance between outlets, distance from, say, elementary schools or schools of any kind, lots of different considerations. And those authorities to regulate would be delegated to the city council in the ballot question. But I don't want to get too far ahead of myself. I want to refer to City Attorney Frankel in terms of how that regulatory framework works. I believe that it would have the opportunity to be prepared in parallel or a a take effect on the legalization of retail sale could occur at some point in the future. Even though the vote might be this November, it may not take effect until, let's say, July first of twenty twenty-one, just to speak hypothetically, so that then council could spend that time in between developing that regulatory framework. But City Attorney Frankel, would you please agree, disagree, or add in any additional context, sir?
Thanks, Mr. Dorr. Dave Frankel, City Attorney. I've been thinking about this as you've discussed the issue this evening, and I don't, obviously, with the timelines involved, the ballot language could be before city council within the next week. But obviously, the regulatory framework will not have been developed at that time. So I would look to other cities' experiences with developing the regulatory framework potentially parallel or if approved by the voters. So I think the question to the voters could be along the lines of, should there be permitted retail sale of marijuana within the city? And should there be an excise tax on those sales with the regulatory framework to be approved by city council once the election results are known? So I think delaying the effective date of the sales would likely be necessary to give time for staff to make recommendations and for council to consider the regulatory framework that will be in place.
Is there concern without certainty for voters that it may get, that it may make it less appealing of a ballot measure? So for instance, I know other communities have maybe limited the number of total retail marijuana shops within their community, right? They they have a set number, and I believe that was brought to in question to to the voters. And perhaps I'm wrong on that. I may be misremembering. But with, are we concerned without certainty of what it would look like, that it might impact the ability of of voters to feel comfortable to vote yes? That might be for either Deputy Manager Dorr or for Ms. Weigle or for Chris Lindsay.
Ms. Weigle, let me defer to you to your experience in other communities. I generally speaking, I think it would probably be desirable to be less prescriptive in a ballot question because then that can only be changed by yet another ballot question to follow on. Of course, our information and communications, we would certainly solicit feedback, as we always do, from the Westminster community on choices that might be available to council. But Ms. Weigle, could you, could you comment on that for Mayor Protem, please?
Yeah, and I'm not familiar with what every single community has done on this, of course, but but generally, the more specific and less conceptual the the measure is, it tends to fare worse. So, you know, because placing a cap may sound, you know, of a certain number may sound entirely reasonable to some residents, whereas some others may feel it should be slightly less or slightly more or what have you. So it just gives them something else to disagree with, and it may be that the ballot language can say, you know, can also include the opportunity for community and but so that you all are hearing the range of opinions on some of those specifics prior to implementation without having to load up a ballot language with so, you know, so many technical details.
Okay. Thank you. That that makes sense. If I believe, I can't remember this slide perfectly right now, and they weren't in our packets, but I want to say it was like sixty-one percent, is that correct? Was in favor of of allowing marijuana retail sales, or is that lower than it was? I know it was like in the forties, that was a strong yes, and I can't remember what the full yes was.
Oh, so the the when we asked conceptually, it was sixty-one percent that supported the concept of allowing marijuana to be sold in the city. When we asked the ballot question, again, that was much more focused on implementing an additional tax on any products that are sold within the city, it was at fifty-seven percent yes.
Where did, and I'm I'm not in your industry, and I know you don't have a crystal ball, but I was wondering, when do you tend to see, what is the range that you like to see before you think a ballot initiative has a strong chance of passing?
Yeah, so the conventional wisdom used to be sixty percent, but it is very rare that ballot measures in Colorado tend to hit that mark these days. So high fifties is usually about as strong as we tend to see. So this is definitely in that range. The definite yes to definite no ratio is one that by being more than two to one is definitely hitting sort of the standard conventional wisdom threshold of where of where successful measures tend to start. So the marijuana measure definitely is more in that range.
Okay. Thank, thank you. I really appreciate your assistance with this. So I I, this is hard because this does feel really rushed, and it does feel like a really big change for our community. And it's hard because just this is nobody's fault, just the the timing that we all have. We haven't even really begun to see how close are we going to be in that range to eighteen million versus thirty-two million in revenue shortfall. You know, so there's a lot of unknowns as we're looking at a really big change. And and we might be in pretty, you know, not knowing how desperately we will need this revenue, but having a pretty good sense that we will is 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 makes it difficult. I want to agree with Counselor Demont and Counselor Vols that I really do want to make sure that this is a robust, holistic discussion looking at both sides of the ledger. And it is, I agree with Counselors Smith, it's hard to be talking about just one side of the ledger without really getting that crystal clear picture of of where we are going to be looking on each side. It's hard for me to have it in isolation. I do have a question for city manager, Assistant City Manager, sorry, Deputy City Manager Dorr. Right now, what do we anticipate that we will have left in reserves at the end of twenty twenty to help us go into twenty twenty-one?
Thank you for the question. You know, we are still revising our twenty twenty updated budget. We anticipate taking our August receipts that will come here in the next couple of weeks and then really committing to our proposed twenty twenty year end balances you just described, and then our twenty twenty-one budget based on that the most up to date and latest information possible. So I don't have that number readily at hand. I'll tell you, yeah, I would expect it to be multimillions less than what we began in January. I can tell you that with pretty good confidence. I think that at our July twenty-sixth retreat, we described.
Unfortunately.
A little bit?
Yeah, unfortunately, I lost just that last little bit. You, the last thing I heard was at our July twenty-sixth retreat.
Thank you. I was just saying that at our July twenty-sixth retreat, I I described, I had a particular slide that described the burn rate or the reserves utilization and so forth by month. And I'll be updating on council on that in a week. And it was, I think, at the time was five million dollars to that point, just because of operations continuing in spite of, you know, expense reductions, the revenue drop off just creating that. So again, we haven't completed our twenty twenty revised or updated budget, but I expect the reserves to be in the multimillions less than we started at the beginning of the year, hence the idea that this this will not sort of save that financial picture, but it's a real holistic approach. I'm sorry, I don't have that number available, but but we anticipate that in September.
That's certainly understandable. Well, at that point, I'm gonna, in my questions, I see that Counselor Vols has another question on this topic.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. You asked a couple of my questions, so I'm good. I have one just really brief question, and then I'm done. And this is to Mr. Dorr, to our team. Are we aware of any other city currently contemplating a budget or a ballot initiative of this type? Is there any other city out there who is in the process or that we've heard of in the process of doing what we're contemplating here, a ballot initiative to raise taxes? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Vols. I know what I have read in the media that our neighbor, the city and county of Broomfield, is having a question on retail sales of marijuana. I believe that that is still authorized for the November question, and that's the only one that I am aware of. But I'd ask him, Ms. Weigle, if you are aware of any others, and also Assistant City Manager Lindsay, if you are, please, please share that. But Lori, would you comment on other tax changes across the front range?
I'm not aware of any that are seeking seeking a marijuana tax per se, other than the one you named. Mostly, I've seen huh, but that's been more at the county level. A lot of counties are contemplating so-called de Gallagher ballot measures to provide some flexibility in maintaining their revenues, and that seems to be a predominant theme. But we can certainly, I can ask around and see if there's anyone else.
Thank you, Lori.
Assistant City Manager Lindsay, were you gonna add to that? Do you, are you aware of any of any?
Thank you, Mayor Protem sites. I'm not aware of any others.
I believe, and I could be spreading bad information, but I thought that the city of Denver was going to have a sales tax question in regards to climate action. But I could be incorrect on that.
All right, thanks, folks. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Counselor Demont, it appears you have another question?
We do. One for maybe City Manager Dorr and one probably for the chief, since he's available for questions, which I wasn't real aware of when I asked my police questions earlier. First, the police question, do we know, have we looked back at at the reasoning that the or the feedback that the police department gave years ago when we first looked at this? And is that something that we could understand from their perspective and how much that might have changed since that industry has developed?
Thank you, Councilor Demont. I wanted to go ahead and invite Chief Carlson to answer that, sir.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for the question. This is Tim Carlson, the chief of police. Mr. Demont, I'm not, I don't have at my disposal tonight the reasons that the police department objected to retail sales back when it was first proposed. Can find, I can find those objections and get them to you. Keep in mind that, as Mr. Door has pointed out, this is a maturing industry that's now been in our communities for a number of years. And I would say that probably some things have changed since then. But I don't know the specific objections at this point, but I can certainly get those and get them to you.
I would appreciate it. My other question is about how you could potentially, and I don't know actually if this is for you, Mr. Door, potentially maybe for Dave Frankel, but I'm just curious how you control the areas that it goes into. I can tell you that being on council for three years and running for a couple of elections prior to that, this topic, I've had no shortage of people on both sides of the issue. But one thing that I've consistently heard a concern with is what area of town that, you know, you would end up putting these businesses in. And I can tell you that there is a concern from some members of the historic part of town that are worried that if we did something like retail marijuana, that it would all be in their backyard. And I think, you know, any member of the community that is concerned about that sort of thing, how do we decide where these businesses go? And is that administrative? Is that something council would have to weigh in on? What does that actually look like if this moved forward?
Councilor Demont, this is Dave Frankel. I would recommend that those details be included in the regulations that are considered by city council. And I think you could achieve spacing by means of few different mechanisms. You could put a range, a physical distance range between these licenses. And as referenced earlier, I believe there was discussion about just having a specific limited number of these that could be approved. So I think you could have control over the locations and how they are, if they would be concentrated or if they would be dispersed, if there would be multiple licenses or limited numbers of licenses. I also, I believe, you know, the special permit licensing board, we'd have to look at the ability to, you know, leverage their expertise and how they are managing liquor licenses and compliance with city rules as well as state rules. So we'd need to, I think, create a regulatory structure that addressed, you know, ongoing compliance, but also how it fits into our land development code as far as the types of locations that are appropriate and not appropriate, and which kinds of zones potentially these could be in, whether this would be viewed as a retail commercial use or something more akin to an industrial use, which would potentially limit locations that it could occupy.
And you kind of got to some of my further questions. So, you know, we probably would envision this going to the SPL Board as the body that already regulates liquor licenses, I imagine. With that being said, is there, in Colorado state law, if you start allowing those sorts of businesses, and maybe you just said this and I missed it, that was a lot of information that you just gave, can we limit how many that we allow overall? Can we limit how many we allow per year? What's our flexibility? Understanding, I know a lot of times being on that special permit licensing board for many years, you know, there's a very, with alcohol licenses or liquor sale licenses, there's a narrow guideline that really comes from the state that says, here's why you can or can't approve a business license. So is there more flexibility in this, less flexibility in it as a governing body?
So I think it's fair to say we have a lot to learn as far as our options locally. And if council is interested in moving forward with this, we will definitely look to the experience of other cities and the framework within state law as to what level of local control is appropriate or allowable versus the state regulatory structure for marijuana sales. I think CML has some very good resources available to us. They've provided us a lot of questions from other cities that have been run. They've provided us spreadsheets as to which cities have excise taxes and the range of excise taxes that they assess against marijuana sales so that we can understand the market and ways to, you know, consider the market when we consider what our local excise tax might be set at to ensure that, well, at least we're aware of neighboring jurisdictions and the excise taxes that they're assessing. But as far as the regulatory experiences of our neighbors too, I think we will absolutely leverage the experience of other cities and try to learn from their experiences.
Great, thank you for those answers. I think this just kind of further shows why I am concerned about doing something like this so quickly, just because I think one of the things that was very clear that I've heard and I both saw myself when marijuana was legalized in Colorado retail, for retail specifically, you know, what we thought that money was going to go to, I think for a lot of people, it didn't end up going to. And whether that was, you know, poor homework on our own part, whether it was portrayed a certain way, I would want to make sure that we are doing a really good job of educating the public exactly what they're agreeing to, understanding, you know, the law does allow us to do a moratorium, but it sounds like we're unclear what else the law allows us to regulate as far as, you know, the details of what that actually looks like in putting that in your city. So while I do think, again, if we're to ever ask this question and move forward with it, I would never support it personally with my support without it going to the voters. And frankly, I probably would just let the voters speak on it and keep my opinion to myself more than likely. But with that being said, I just feel like this is too rushed, and we still haven't even looked on the inside and done our part to figure out how we're going to mitigate these losses for this year. So I think that this is, I'd be hard pressed to approve putting this on the ballot this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Demont. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go through and poll council. And what I'm hearing from staff is they're just wanting to cut direction from us tonight if we want to continue the conversation or move forward with looking at ballot language for a revenue, or I guess a legalization of marijuana and a revenue stream associated with it. I think our options tonight, and please, please correct me if I'm wrong, Deputy City Manager Door, are one, to go ahead and move forward, two, to decide not to move forward, or three, say we'd like some more information at our next scheduled meeting. And a lot of the information I'm hearing we need is kind of what our best practice is in other communities and what's the extent of local control. Can I just, does that seem, sound appropriate to everyone?
Mayor Pro Tem, if I may, I think that, and I might get the number wrong, but I think that choice number three goes with number one. In other words, if it's, if it's the pleasure of council to have staff provide two things, one, some proposed or suggested or a rough workup of ballot language along with some best practices, we will certainly do our best to try to provide those to you here just within a week. I will say that that's an extensive and in-depth discussion of best practices, regulatory framework, ballot language and so forth. That's, we will do our best to put that together. Or if it's not moved forward, and I suppose continue the conversation in the years ahead for the Westminster community on this subject, we can certainly do that. So I think it's, it's sort of that first choice that I described or the second one, because we would want to bring forth both of those items to you because of our election deadlines.
So I guess I see that third choice as not wanting to commit at this point to go forward with a ballot, but not willing, not being willing to foreclose on the conversation, recognizing that there is maybe a significant revenue need, but needing more data to say we want to move forward. And I do see that as slightly different. I don't know if my colleagues do. Are you telling us that there is not enough time to have that third option?
Well, I, we can of course provide ongoing and continued information, but it would be something on the order of a potential question 2021. Obviously, at that point, happy to do that. We can continue to work with that. But for 2020, effectively, our deadline is the 24th of August. We have to approve and enter into intergovernmental agreements to have a question on the ballot. It's a very, very close timeline. But we would certainly work very hard to provide points of consideration. And council would have the deadline to approve via resolution specific ballot language to refer to the voters in just a week. So I think if the way you described the third choice is an ongoing conversation that continues on into 2021, would that can certainly be an option that we can do.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and poll council. Councilor Demont.
Like I shared, I think that we have more work that we need to do internally before we put one of these ballot questions out. So I am uncomfortable moving forward at this point.
Thank you. Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I do not feel comfortable moving forward at this point.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you. I also do not feel comfortable moving forward at this point.
Counselor Vols.
I agree. I am not comfortable moving forward at this point. I think there are a lot of unanswered questions, and so I would, I would agree with my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay. So I feel like I'm a little bit stuck because I would like us to have the flexibility of potentially revenue option, but this feels very rushed, particularly without having kind of an idea of what it would look like specifically in our community. So while I would be willing to continue the conversation, it just sounds like we have no time to continue the conversation for when it's really relevant this year. So I appreciate that, and it sounds like at this time, there's no momentum to move forward. Thank you for the amount of time, energy and effort. I really appreciate the all-hands-on-deck approach to trying to look for ways to meet the gap. So I hope this is not a hard blow for staff, but I'm just recognizing this is a large policy shift, and I just don't feel like we've been, we have the time at this time to really assess the impacts to our community and make sound policy. So thank you so much. With that said, unless there are further comments from staff, there has been a request, a very patient request for a bio break. So I'd like to honor that, but I do want staff, if you have any follow-up comments.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, members of city council. I appreciate your great attention to this matter. And, you know, our job is to provide facts and information and to undertake this important due diligence and provide all opportunities for your consideration. So we would consider that as effort well spent to give you this very difficult, albeit important, choice. So thank you for your direction, and we will continue forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're gonna take a brief bio break. I show the time right now as 9:13. Is seven minutes too long? Can we reconvene at 9:20?
Sounds good.
All right, great. We'll meet back in 9:20. Thanks. All right. Ms. Parker, can you please make sure that we have everyone back with us?
Certainly. Counselor Demont.
I'm back.
Mayor Protam sites.
I am here.
Counselor Seymour.
I'm here. Thank you.
Counselor Smith.
Present.
And Counselor Vols.
Here.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. The next thing we're going to discuss is we're going to have a presentation on staff recommendations in regards to a city owned property at seventy-two, twenty-five Bradburn Boulevard. And next steps. Can we have staff lead this one off?
John Hall, are you available to kick this one off for us?
Um, you may be on mute, Mr. Hall. It, I can see Mr. Hall is muting and unmuting himself. Right now it appears he's unmuted, but we can't hear him. Can he get assistance? Mr. Hall, are you there? Does anyone want to maybe troubleshoot for him?
Mayor Protam sites, this is Michelle Parker. I'm trying to communicate with him offline to see if he needs assistance or if he is disconnected. If you can just bear with us for just a moment.
My apologies. Please work ahead.
Yes, we can.
We can hear you loud and clear. Please go forward, Mr. Hall.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protam and council, this is John Hall, Economic Development Director. I apologize for the audio glitch. We're here tonight to provide a presentation to council and to receive your feedback on our proposed direction for the development of the city-owned property at seventy-two, twenty-five Bradburn Boulevard. Matt, if you could advance to the next slide, to the cover slide. Thank you. With me tonight are Chase Evans, our Real Estate and Development Administrator, and Nicole Ankeny, our Senior Landscape Architect from Parks, Recreation and Libraries. As you're aware, the city-owned property located at seventy-two, twenty-five Bradburn Boulevard was purchased with federal funds from the Community Development Block Grant Program and was originally planned for a roadway realignment project. The roadway realignment project was canceled in 2016, and it was subsequently reprogrammed to serve as a site for affordable housing in order to meet a requirement of CDBG funding. There have been some additional circumstances over the course of the past year that have changed, that have brought us back to you tonight. And Chase Evans is going to start the presentation and walk you through some of the specifics of the site and our current thinking. Nicole will also provide a short presentation in her thinking about the site. Chase?
Thank you, John. Next slide, please. So as John mentioned, the city originally acquired the seven-two-two-five Bradburn site in two thousand, two thousand and eleven for $400,000 using the CDBG federal funds. This property was originally acquired for a, the Bradburn realignment project in order to align Bradburn Boulevard with the Raleigh Street, which is just south of Seventy-second Avenue. If you're looking at the map on this screen and highlighted in red is seven-two-two-five Bradburn that we'll be discussing this evening. Located just north of the property is the former Larry's Automotive Building. To the south is a residential building. To the east is Bradburn, I'm sorry, yes, to the east is Bradburn Boulevard. And to the west is the, a community park that is managed and controlled by the City of Westminster Parks, Recreation and Libraries Department. This community garden is bounded by the BNSF Railroad to the north, in the Little Dry Creek to the south, as well as privately owned multifamily apartments to the west. So currently, because of this, the only access to the, the existing community garden is provided. You can, if you look closely, you can see it in the darker color is a, is an access road through the center of the seven-two-two-five Bradburn Boulevard parcel. In 2015, it was originally determined that the realignment project would cost an additional $2.2 million over the original property acquisition. In addition to that, based on further study of the proposed project, the project, the realignment project will require the purchase of additional privately owned property to the north and south of seven-two-two-five Bradburn Boulevard. Additionally, based on additional feedback from the community, that this realignment project was a relatively low priority for the community, as well as subsequent analysis that determined that the intersection could remain in its current configuration and, and remain so and be seen to the public. Based on these findings back in 2015, in, well, in 2016, staff came forward with a recommendation to cancel the Bradburn Roadway realignment project. In order to cancel this project without having to repay the full, and at that time, it was the full CDBG expenditures, expenditure, expenditures to date was $693,000, $693,265,000. In order to avoid repaying that full amount, city staff recommended changing the proposed use for the site in order to meet a separate national objective. Now, there is no way around, the city was required to repay the $245,000 that were ineligible, associated with planning expenses for that realignment project. Next slide, please. Since the Bradburn Roadway realignment project was canceled in 2017, staff has explored partnering with the Habitat for Humanity for the development of four affordable units of, sorry, four units of affordable housing on the site. Affordable housing would meet a national objective, which was, which was the desire to not have to repay the full amount of the CDBG funds. An environmental assessment has been completed, and the existing improvements on site which were found to contain asbestos were fully demolished and remediated, along with soil that was found to be contaminated. The demolition and remediation was completed in August of 2019. As I mentioned previously, the only physical access to the existing community garden is through the seven-two-two-five Bradburn property. Now, while staff believe that with the four units of affordable housing, access could be potentially maintained by going through the center of the property, staff always desired to purchase the former Larry's Auto Building to the north in order to provide adequate physical access to the property, as well as for vehicles, pedestrians and bicycles, as well as adequate visual access in order to help improve safety, as well as to provide sufficient parking for the community to access the community gardens. Unfortunately, staff was unable to reach an agreement with the former property owner of Larry's Automotive. And in March 2020, this property was sold to a third party. As a result of the sale of the former Larry's Auto Property, the seven-two-two-five Bradburn Boulevard property is needed to provide sufficient parking, physical and visual access for the community garden. Because of this, staff will be recommending the cancellation of the CDBG affordable housing project at seven-two-two-five Bradburn Boulevard in, in an upcoming city council meeting. Before I move forward and talk a little through the mechanics that HUD will require in order to cancel, formally cancel the project, I'd like to pause here and open it up to any questions, particularly around the history of the site, as well as if there are any questions around the, the current or future plans for the Westminster Community Gardens, along with my colleague, Nicole Ankeny.
Council, do you have any questions? Please put your name in the queue if you do at this point. Otherwise, we'll continue on with the presentation.
Oh, thank you. Counselor Seymour does have a question.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Just a question, too. I see the visual that's on here now. In, in the part that is the parcel, the seventy-two, twenty-five Bradburn, it, it, it looks like, is there going to be some parking there also, or is it just, it passed through?
Sure. I will, I will turn this over to Nicole. I can tell you that this graphic is dated. It was from 2017. And this is, so this is before the, the most recent information was provided. So as part of the, if we do decide to go forward and cancel the project, this graphic would certainly be updated. But I'll let Nicole weigh in on this, please.
Thank you, Chase. And thank you, council, for having me this evening. My name is Nicole Ankeny, and I'm a Senior Landscape Architect with Parks, Recreation and Libraries. And Chase is absolutely correct. The image that you see on the screen was completed in 2017, and that was completed as part of the England Park Corridor Master Planning Process that was associated with the Great Outdoors Colorado, Generation Wild, was formerly called the Inspire Grant. And that work was done to try to figure out a way to get access through and, along with other proposed improvements along this entire corridor. Since that time, I think we've had some additional review. We've had a lot of additional community input. And I think this is really about an alignment of opportunity, vision and city resources. For us in Parks, Recreation and Libraries, there's really three critical items to this park. We have a lot of site constraints that Chase mentioned. We have the railroad. We have Seventy-second Avenue. We've got private properties in addition to the concrete channel that is Little Dry Creek Park, or Little Dry Creek, and its associated flood plain and the trail. So I think the three critical items is improved vehicular access and parking for the Westminster Garden. Most of you may know that the Westminster Garden was actually the very first community garden within the city. Number two, we really would like to prioritize bicycle and pedestrian access to the garden, to the Little Dry Creek Trail, and provide a connection to the safe crossing at Seventy-second Avenue and Raleigh Street. And then thirdly, we need to provide visual access into the park from the street and integrate it truly into the Harris Park neighborhood. One of the additional constraints of this site, beyond what you can see on the page here, is actually the site grading. Once you get to the west side of seven-two-two-five Bradburn, it really has a sharp, a steep decline. And so there are some pockets that are not visible from Bradburn Boulevard. By acquiring seven-two-two-five Bradburn within the Parks, Recreation and Libraries properties, that really gives us a lot of flexibility to do some additional assessment and determine whether the parking should be shared on the existing park space and seven-two-two-five Bradburn, or whether one area is better than another. But overall, that gives us a lot more flexibility and opportunity to move forward in working with council and the community to determine the best site plan.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. And I do, I am very familiar with, with the slope on, on that, on that site as it, as it heads down to the west. I'm also looking at this too, as a, as a great opportunity. And I know we're doing a parking study for the Harris Park area. And this could be a great augmentation for when there's events at Fireman's Park and our, our great businesses along Seventy-third Avenue and events that are, that are down there, too, as well as being a, a visual access to that property. And so I look, I look forward to that as it, as it comes to fruition. Thank you very much. And no questions.
All right. Counsel, are there any other questions, or should we go forward with the presentation? Seeing none, let's go, let's continue the presentation at this time.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So in court, in order to cancel the Bradburn Affordable Housing Project, there are several requirements that HUD will require to remove the federal encumbrances that are currently on the site. The first step will be to complete a substantial amendment to the 2019 CDBG Annual Action Plan. As part of this amendment, there will be a required 30-day public posting of the substantial amendment. We'll go into a little bit more detail with, on the following slide, around timeline for this action. But to give a little heads up, the, the proposed planning is to actually post this, public posting as of tomorrow, August 18th, 2020. HUD also requires an appraisal, a recent appraisal of the property. This appraisal is currently underway and will be completed prior to city staff returning to council for formal action. Also, the city will have to repay HUD the $449,105. And this amount is the remainder of all CDBG funds that have been spent to date for this Bradburn Affordable Housing Project. In order to repay these funds, staff intend to use designated funds that are limited to park and open space, as the seven-two-two-five Bradburn property will be integrated into the existing community garden, so that we do not currently at this time plan to use general, general funds in order to repay HUD for these expenditures. In addition, staff will also have to work to reprogram a 182, 240, I'm sorry, $182,240 of CDBG funds that were budgeted, however, were not spent on the Bradburn Affordable Housing Project. Lastly, that $449,000 that the city will have to repay, that will actually come back to the city in the form of our CDBG line of credit. Once that comes back to the city, city staff will work to allocate these, this, these funds to other projects that meet national objectives. The specific projects that will be, that, that these funds will be awarded to has not been determined yet, and this will be completed as part of the consolidated plan, which is currently underway. And we are currently scheduled to come to council to present the consolidated plan in October of 2020. Next slide, please. And finally, just to wrap up our, our, our short presentation this evening, again, just a quick timeline of, of key dates coming forward. Again, tomorrow, August 18th, 2020, is the proposed begin date for the public posting for the 20, for the amendment to the 2019 CDBG Annual Action Plan. We expect that public posting, again, as it's required for 30 days, that that will run through September 17th, 2020. And then on September 28th, 2020, city staff will be returning to city council for formal action to cancel the project, as well as to allocate the funds for the repayment to HUD. So that, that concludes our presentation for this evening. As we are preparing to complete the public posting, or begin the public posting tomorrow, we wanted to have an opportunity to provide this update to city council, as well as answer any questions, so that you may be prepared to answer questions, if you receive any from, from Westminster citizens and businesses.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robbins. Colleagues, do you have, it looks like we have a question from Counselor Demont.
One question and then some comment. With using the parks money, so does that allow then for us to be able to look at some parking there that's sorely needed in that part of town, that they catch that, that right? How, how does that work?
Counselor Demont, this is John Hall. I'm assuming you can hear me this time?
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah. So in, in very simple terms, the parks funds would go to repay the money from HUD, and that would release the money from HUD, and that would release the federal restrictions on the site. Uh, and then the site could be used for, as Nicole, Nicole Ankeny, uh, indicated, the site could be used for parking if that was selected as the best location for parking relative to overall park design.
Okay, great. Um, a couple, a couple of quick comments and just, you know, since this agenda went out. I know that I certainly haven't, I imagine my colleagues have heard from the community. There was a, a big, um, group of folks who did not want to see us move forward with affordable housing on that unit. And I, um, did vote against that when I was early on on council, that I just didn't think that was a good fit. I think that this is a much better aligned, um, item and plan with what we want to see in the, the community and what the community more frankly wants to see. Um, and we certainly do need parking sorely down in, in that area to support the businesses on Seventy Third in, in events and even the community garden. So this was a, a welcome thing for me to see, and I'm glad that we're able to look at this, and I definitely support this change in direction.
Thank you, Counselor Demont. Does anyone else want to weigh in? Okay, um. Count, oh, I apologize. Counselor Smith.
No, my apologies. I was late to the punch on getting in the queue. So, um, I, I just want to, uh, thank staff for this, um, presentation and, uh, for listening to our community. Um, while I wasn't on council, I heard a lot about this from neighbors and residents in historic Westminster. Um, and then, uh, just attending events in historic Westminster. And with the struggle of, uh, parking in the, in the downtown area, it's very difficult to maneuver uh, it, it with businesses and walk-ups. And, and so this is a welcomed, uh, opportunity, I think, for this area to have this parking here. So, um, thank you for, for listening to the residents and, uh, making this change. Uh, I think it will be, uh, beneficial for not only the residents, but for, uh, all of the businesses that we're trying to establish in this area and that are already established. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Counselor Vols.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, I also like my colleagues. What a thanks staff for bringing this forward. And, you know, this is a great example of when people, residents in that area, in that neighborhood said what their preferences were, how they'd like to see this lay in use. Staff listened, you heard them, and there's a change of direction here. I've always, since I've been on council, been a supporter of a good quality affordable housing. And whenever we had those opportunities, I would vote for that. But this is a really great suggestion, and I would strongly support it. I have, like Counselor Demont said, I have heard from members of the, of the community. So our friends and neighbors in that area are actually, uh, thrilled with this decision or this proposal. So I would be, uh, in strong support of this. I like the idea of some form of public parking, um, kind of in that area. I know there, there is some concern on that. And I had one person notify me and said, well, would there be a possibility for an electric vehicle charging station on this location? And I know that if we do have parking, if that is, becomes part of this plan, is that something that we might consider in the future? I know that we are embarking on a partnership with Excel Energy to electrify our fleet of vehicles and then to also have that concept spread throughout the city amongst our residents as much as possible. So that's one of our goals. Uh, it, would that be a possibility for the site, or could it be at least considered?
Counselor Vols, I'm going to ask Nicole if she might have the answer to that question. Otherwise, we can get that information to you. I am clearly out of my depth talking about electric charging stations. Thank you.
I am too, John.
Yes, thank you. I think that this is an opportunity where we could consider that. I think it's worth, uh, having that be part of the analysis to see what is going to fit in with the community, with the existing park, how that integrates directly into the Harris Park neighborhood. So I think that this could be a great, uh, an asset for us to take a look at whether or not that makes sense at this particular site. Or, you know, in, in the vicinity. I think that's absolutely a great suggestion for us to review.
Uh, and, you know, I can't take credit for it. I had someone call me and, and suggest that. So I'm asking on behalf of a friend and a neighbor down there. So thank you very much. And, uh, thank you for this presentation. I appreciate it.
Um, so I'd like to weigh in as well. Um, as most people know, I've been, um, kind of a passionate advocate for affordable housing in our community. Um, I think it's, you know, access to housing, quality housing is something that really, um, allows our community to be stable and allows people to thrive. That said, I'm not singularly focused on just that public value. Um, and this proposal, um, I think has a lot of other, um, elements to it that I strongly support. We talked a lot at our budget retreat and strategic committee retreat, retreat, um, about the importance about of regional equity um, when it comes to access to public parks and open spaces. During COVID, we've seen how incredibly crucial our parks and our open spaces are to our residents, physical and, and emotional and mental well, wellbeing. Um, and so I really like including that access and really enhancing and already existing, um, assets with the gardens. Um, I, so I appreciate that. Um, I also appreciate, and we saw both in our citizen survey, um, and also in recent polling, the, the importance and the goal for multimodal, um, connections within the community. So I do I appreciate the access to that. Um, and then also kind of listening to the, the residents wanting additional parking, um, and, and just kind of what they've wanted to vision, having this be an extension of the, the input we heard from the Harris Park plan. Um, so while, um, I did vote in favor of this for being affordable housing, and I do believe, um, strongly in the importance of, of our commitment to affordable housing. I think these are also worthy goals and, and match the needs, um, in the community. Um, I was hoping that either, um, uh, Department Head, um, Hall, or, um, someone could talk about the city's continued commitment to affordable housing. I don't want this to infer that we are not as committed to, um, that or, um, and I also wanted to ask, what does this mean for our relationship with Habitat for Humanity and, um, opportunities for, for sale affordable housing?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Sites, this is John Hall, Economic Development Director. I'd be happy to speak to those questions. If I leave something out, please, uh, please remind me. You know, we continue to implement a comprehensive strategy to facilitate the development of both workforce and affordable housing in dispersed locations around the city. And that's consistent with the strategy that was received by council in 2016. Since 2016, we have over a thousand units of affordable and workforce housing either built, under construction or planned. And we continue to employ a variety of tools to encourage this diversity of housing types in order to build a balanced housing stock in the city. So that continues to be, uh, a strong focus for us, consistent with, uh, council direction. Obviously, part of, uh, an important part of the business that we're engaged in is relationships. And so that relationship with Habitat for Humanity continues to be important to us. Uh, we continue to believe there are, uh, multiple locations around the city where we can engage in conversations with Habitat regarding the provision of for sale affordable housing to residents in the city. So, uh, with that as an overarching statement, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions. If I missed something, please let me know.
No, I, I don't believe you did. Do you need direction from council at this time?
We sure like to, always like to have it, um, because there is, uh, funding and repayment involved. We would, uh, like to have your consensus to move forward and come back to you in a formal session for formal action on those items.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and poll my, my colleagues unless there are further comments. Um, Counselor Demont, did you jump in with another comment?
Um, I just wanted to take a quick moment to actually thank, um, John Hall on the continued, um, partnership with Habitat for Humanity that we're going to stay on with them as trying to find a place for them to go um, in the city, because I do really value that organization and how they approach housing. Um, and I think even when I, you know, we had this before us before, I think I stated at that point that this is, you know, that's a great organization, and I hope that we can find um, multiple places where that they could partner with us in the city of Westminster. So I'm glad to hear your, your comments about that particular organization.
Uh, Counselor Demont, you just want to keep going and let us know, um, where you're at with this, if you'd like it to go forward.
Yep, but, but please do. I'm, I'm definitely supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Seymour.
I am supportive moving forward with the proposal.
Counselor Smith.
I am supportive as well. Thank you.
I think Counselor Vols.
I'm also supportive, uh, of this proposal. Thank you.
And Counselor Sites as well. Okay, um, now we're going to move into the discussion of the city's response to COVID nineteen and next steps. Who would like to kick it off for us?
Mayor Protem, this is Barbara Opie, Deputy City Manager. If I could, uh, we have, uh, I'll just kind of queue up, uh, our items for tonight. We have case data that Max Kirschbaum will review with, um, with council and the public. Uh, we have our long-term recovery update. John Hall will kick that off, and then strategic hiring discussion, uh, with Larry Dorr. So if I could turn it over to Max. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. Um, as we've done in past weeks, uh, I have a series of four slides this evening that highlight state data as well as Jefferson County data, as well as the Adams County portion of tri-county health data. So Matt, if you'll go to the next slide for me. Um, as, as we have had in the past, again, we seem to have some congruity between the state and the two counties' data, which is always helpful when they're, when they appear to be in alignment. What you see on this graph is the three-day average of positive cases. And it, it has now been on a declining trend line for the past three weeks after hitting a, a peak in late July. If you look at the, uh, the last data point, the last bar on that chart as of August fifteenth, that is a, about a three hundred, uh, case, positive case total, which is a three-day, again, a three-day average. We go to the next slide. And first, looking at Jefferson County as provided by Jefferson County Public Health. Um, again, we see the declining trend. If you focus on the dark green line, which is the three-day moving average of case totals in Jefferson County. And you look at, again, we're about a, a two-week, uh, period now where we've been on a declining trend. And that data point on, as of the fourteenth of August is about fifteen, so a relatively small number. Okay, moving on to the next slide, which is Adams County focusing on the darker, darkest gold line on this chart representing the Adams County portion of tri-county health data. Again, we, uh, here plotted a little bit differently, but, um, if you go back to a dotted line showing, uh, July twenty-fourth, which is, uh, the tri-county health mask order effective date. Maybe it's coincidence, maybe it's not, but we notice that, uh, that trend line is on a downward slope from about, from the peak on about that date. And, um, if you focus on the last uh, date for data on this chart, uh, as of August sixteenth, that number is about thirty-five. And then finally, going on to the last slide, what we look at on, one more slide, Matt. What we look at on this slide, um, uh, not only do the vertical bars represent, uh, the number of CDPHE and commercial tests performed, maybe, uh, as important or more important is watching the, uh, pattern and the trend line on the dark red line, which again is the three-day moving average of positivity data. And the vertical axis on the right-hand side of the chart is the, uh, is the axis for that line. And the final date of data here is August fifteenth. And that last dot represents a positivity rate, two point four three percent. So again, it is also moving in the right direction. Uh, so state data as well as both counties appear to be on downward trend lines. Um, and I'll conclude with, there has been a, a question in previous weeks about our ability to part that positivity rate. We, we are still not able to obtain data for Westminster only from either of the public health agencies. So the best we can offer is, um, their, their case trend as well as the state, uh, data on positivity rate. That's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kirschbaum. Um, we do have a question or comments rather, um, from Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, just a, just a quick update on my numbers. I, I want to, uh, say that we've had a, uh, in just in the last twenty days, the state has, um, a hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-six thousand more tests. So that, that is, uh, a great number. So we're now past six hundred and thirty-six thousand, uh, tested. So, uh, it, it gives us some, it gives us, our, our numbers continue to grow and our information continues to grow. So I want, I want to share that too, uh, with the public in that, um, we're now getting bigger numbers, so we can, we can look at, at, um, uh, positivity tests that aren't just on people who, um, were in the hospital already. So, so that changes that matrix right there. But if, if we use our, our, our current testing, um, and, and then compare that and not throwing any factor of five to twenty times uh, positivity that Dr. Johnson has talked about with his colleagues, is that, um, our, our death rate to our positivity rate is running at three point three percent. So, uh, tragically, over the whole run of this, if, if we could just use the fixed numbers that we have, that means that over the entire run of COVID nineteen, we could see, um, sixteen thousand deaths, which, which is tragic. But I, I want to remind everyone too that, that in two thousand nine swine flu pandemic hit, and we are still, as of this date, the seasonal flu, um, addresses that H one N one swine flu. So we're, we're talking from twenty, two thousand nine to twenty twenty. I'm still dealing with that. So I want to, the sixteen thousand is not by any means going to happen here, even in the next nine months, twelve months. Um, and looking forward to, as we open up our economy, the bottom line, if you take that factor of what we're looking at right now in our five point eight four two million people that we have in the state of Colorado, our morbidity rate on that, mortality rate, I should say, is point two eight percent. So your survival rate on COVID nineteen is ninety-nine point seven two percent. So I ask people to continue to be safe, but I also ask you, um, and also want to work with my colleagues to fully open our city to our residents and our businesses. Thank you.
Counselor Demont.
Thank you. I'm just curious, Max, if we've, um, had any ground in trying to find some of that more detailed number that's relevant to Westminster at this point. I see that these are still the same, um, slides, which they're still helpful. Um, but I'm just curious if we think that we're going to be able to at some point, or at least we continue to try to look at some of that additional data that I've asked for.
Yeah, I, I believe you were focused primarily on positivity rate data for Westminster. Yeah, I believe you were focused primarily on positivity rate data for Westminster. Maybe I maybe I didn't pause in the initial presentation. But to date, we have not been able to get that Westminster positivity rate data for just Westminster solely. So, you know, the best we can offer is what you see here. We'll continue to talk with both of the public health agencies. But that's also consistent with how Dr. Johnson presented it a couple of weeks ago when he spoke with you. But I understand what you're looking for. You're looking to see, can we make that more Westminster specific?
Correct. And so since we didn't have it, I figured I'd make sure that that's still a desire. So I don't know if that's something that we've specifically asked the health departments for. And they've said, no, that's not possible. Because, you know, we do see, you know, infection rate for Westminster and we have for a while, as well as death rate. So just trying to understand those, I think, would be helpful. The other thing that I had specifically asked for is, you know, kind of where those, frankly, where the deaths in Westminster occurred. Because when we first had this added to what our reports are, I don't believe that that number has changed. So I'm just curious kind of where, in the run of this virus, we've seen that. I've seen a lot of studies and numbers that it seems like maybe, you know, the the mortality rate is decreasing. And I don't know that anybody's willing to commit to that. But I think that, you know, that's best case scenario from what I've heard as this goes through human beings from person to person, the human body starts dealing with it in a better way so that it's not as is dangerous. So that's really the reason I want to know kind of some more of those specifics. But if we don't have those yet, great. I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight that, you know, if we could figure that out, that would be great.
Okay. Are there, if there's no more questions, do we want to move on to the next component of our COVID-19 update?
Yes, please. John Hall, if you could join us for the long term recovery update?
I will. I'm going to ask if everyone can hear me again this evening?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Very short report this evening. We continue to work hard on our business assistance programs. We have virtually exhausted the funding provided for the Westy Rise and Dine Restaurant Assistance Program and have helped 58 businesses totaling 534 employees and $48.3 million in total revenue to date. We continue and will be bringing forward to you, I hope, very shortly, another business assistance program along the lines of what we discussed last week. Also, you have expressed a desire for better data and information around the performance of our economy. We are evaluating a small proposal that could be CARES Act funded from the CU Lead School of Business to help us in that. Two of the things we're keeping an eye on this week and every week, but it was particularly poignant this week. The delinquency rates for both monthly rent payments and mortgage payments has moved up sharply over this, since the beginning of August. So that's a troubling trend. We've been expecting an increase in in housing insecurity. And unfortunately, that appears to be coming to fruition. So we will continue to report out to you on that. We do have two housing assistance programs in place to assist Westminster residents. And I would encourage, should you run across someone that is looking for So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Um, Council, are there any questions for our Department Head Hall? Thank you so much for your presentation. It does not appear that council has questions at this time. Please keep up the good work. It's now time to transition over to the strategic hiring discussion.
So Deputy City Manager, Chief Financial Officer Larry Door, if you could join us?
Thank you, Ms. Opie. Yes, let me just first give some context to this item. We have not had an, I, this particular item under our COVID-19 update. And so for the pleasure of council and those in the listening audience, let me just provide a little background on this strategic hiring discussion and information that I'll have here in just a moment. Saturday before last, on August 8, staff fielded a question from Councilmember Demont related to the city's hiring during COVID-19 and asking for some details related to that. Staff subsequently provided that, I think, early to middle of last week. And there was a follow up question and resulted that Councilmembers Vols, Smith and Demont were interested in having a little bit of a discussion tonight. So I wanted to go ahead and provide some information related to this. And Mr. Williams, would you go ahead and please put that first slide up? Thank you very much, sir. Very early on in this COVID-19 crisis, public health crisis and resultant financial impacts, the city manager directed a strategic hiring freeze effective March 17 in response, knowing that freezing the hiring of positions would immediately save the city money and something that would probably need to be in effect for a good while. You know, as it's been described, we've used expressions like strategic hiring freeze or hiring freeze with exceptions or a selective hiring freeze. And I appreciate that in informal discussions and so forth, people have just used the expression hiring freeze. And that can lead to some some misconceptions about that and which positions would be frozen and so forth. So tonight, this this information here seeks to shed a bit of light on that and just talk a little bit about the process and then some of the numbers and positions and more information. With the idea being that we'd be happy to and intend to provide future updates on this as we go through, go through the situation. So as a position becomes vacant, either from, well, in any, in any instance, retirement, termination, whatever the case may be, the supervisor then undertakes a business evaluation of the position and makes a determination related to the potential to outsource, level of service, et cetera. And then provides a recommendation to his or her division manager as to the request to fill or the necessity and the level of service to the public. Every single one of those is then reviewed by the department head and a recommendation, if warranted, made to our policy and budget department and our Department of Human Resources in terms of the necessity of the position and the immediate need to fill the position or if it might be done on a delayed basis, et cetera. And then those recommendations are made to the deputy city managers for approval. If that's achieved after, often the number of questions, alternative proposals, et cetera, then moves forward to the recruiting process. And then, of course, some recruitments take longer than others. No two are exactly alike. And then ultimately, the position is filled. So there's a pretty good continuum of time there where there's some savings realized from a vacancy just from that process. And then, of course, the recruitment and filling through our ordinary process. At the moment, and you'll see that I've got this dated August 12. That was the, that was the date of the first report as requested by Counselor Demont. And I've got, still got that dated. We haven't updated these numbers just in the last couple of business days. But 39.1 full time equivalent is what FTE stands for presently vacant. Four positions currently in the evaluation phase, 14 under recruitment and 30 positions have been filled since the city manager initiated this hiring freeze March 17. And of course, I say that in an informal way. You can take it as strategic, a hiring selective, or with some exceptions, obviously, after this, after this process. I would just ask you to keep your eyes on the color coding there. And Mr. Williams, if you go to the next slide, I'll provide a little more information and details on the report. Here, you see again the color coding. But we presently in the teal there have four positions under evaluation. Those are vacant but have not either been approved through the process or or refused or not chosen to proceed through. You see those positions there. And then we have 14 positions that we're recruiting for. Obviously, there's a key emphasis in our filled positions on first responders and those who directly support those first responders. One example of that in this blue column is our software engineer. We have a lot of folks who provide support services directly to our police department. Obviously, police department is heavily reliant on systems and hardware and software. So we need to consider that as a very closely related position. And then you see our filled positions. And I can tell you that there's a key emphasis both on support to first responders, revenue type positions and those involved in the judicial process, which you see here. Others may be not funded by the general fund, but we've got all of the positions listed here. You see some that might be, well, that are rather related to the city's utility activities. What you don't see here are the vacancies. And we could provide that in a subsequent follow up. I would suggest, in as much as this was a a discussion or item of interest under COVID-19, we could update this. I think it'd be prudent to do that on a monthly basis. We could include the vacancies in the future, those positions that are in that previous slide, the 39.1 FTE. But I'd also like to point out a rather substantial number of vacancies that aren't warrant on that previous slide. And that's related to the city's seasonal workers. We're right here in the peak, toward the end of the peak, if I may say so, regarding the city's seasonals. We have, last year at this time, more than 250 additional seasonal people working for the city in different capacities, at different hours, a number of hours, different hours of the day, different roles and so forth. And the equivalent of that last time, this time last year versus today is about 1,600 hours per week or an additional, let's just say, 35 to 40 FTE. So there's quite a, quite a significant vacancy that's not captured on that previous slide that I would suggest that you consider as well. So with that, happy to answer any questions. I know that there was the desire to have some discussion and communication on this. Obviously, we've got a number of recruitments happening. We've got some folks that are in a, you know, background type check, others that are in an interview process. Obviously, we're marketing and collecting applications and resumes for a number of these positions. All of these recruitments are in some form or another, not brand new, but underway. Some that were very close to announcing some new hires and so forth. So with that, Mayor Pro Tem, happy to answer any questions or make any comments about the the strategic hiring here during COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Door. I do see that we have a question or comment from Counselor Demont. I wanted to check on the clock. Do we need to do an extension? Do we have till 10:30 or 11? Can someone remind me?
Mayor Pro Tem Sites, this is Dave Frankel. Since the study session and special meeting this evening began at 6:30, I believe at 10:30, we'll need an extension.
Well, I would propose, if if one of my colleagues was willing to make a motion to extend, perhaps we won't need it. But I think before we get into questioning, that way we're not cutting someone off in the middle of their train of thought.
I would propose, I would propose that. This is Counselor Demont. I would propose we extended 10:30 or until 11, half an hour.
Till 11. Is there a second?
This is Counselor Vols. I would second that.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Counselor Demont, a second from Counselor Vols. Can I, do we have to do a roll call and can we do all in favor? Is it a voice vote or a roll call vote?
Again, City Attorney Frankel, I would think that a voice vote would be adequate, yes, to get the consensus of the group.
All of favors say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Counselor Demont, I believe you have questions or comments?
Yeah, and I think I could be quick. I quite frankly, would like to defer this. I appreciate the background. I would like to be able to defer this and discuss this once City Manager Trip is back. I have serious concerns with us hiring innovations and communications people. I could see almost all the rest of these that are in the recruiting or evaluation being critical from plan operators and utility people and fire and police. I'm just not sure on the other ones. But but quite frankly, it's a discussion I'd like to have with the city manager. So I would like to defer the discussion until he is able to field our questions.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Counselor Smith, I believe you maybe typed in second in regards to my motion or was that seconding what Counselor Demont just put forward?
Thank you for allowing me to clarify. I was looking at seconding Counselor Demont's thoughts as most of the questions refer to our for City Manager Trip.
Okay. Are there any other counselors that have questions for our CFO and Deputy City Manager Door at this time? Okay. See none. I believe that concludes our business for the evening. Is is there any other comments or concerns? Acting City Manager Barbara Opie, do you have any comments?
No, Mayor Pro Tem, thank you very much.
Well, we really didn't need that extension, did we? Thank you all. Everyone have a wonderful night. And this concludes the Westminster City Council Study Session for this evening.